Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, March 24th, 2025. I am the Board Chair, Eric Eldridge. The following meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Tinsborough Media. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Xfinity and Verizon FiOS, and as a live stream on our website, www.tinsboroughma.gov. A recording of this meeting will be available through our video-on-demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio so declare that now. Seeing none, after instruction from the State Fire Marshal and the Tinsborough Fire Chief, in the event of an emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room and one to my left. And with that, I would like to ask all those who can to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as one.
Thank you. I will now start with Board introductions. To my left...
Good evening, Jaclyn Schnackers, Executive Assistant.
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Ron Schneider.
Hello, Jackie Gilfus.
Good evening, Ron Cohane.
Good evening, Colin Loizel, Town Manager.
Okay, we've got an action-packed agenda. Why don't we start off with our meeting minutes?
Mr. Chair, move the regular session meeting minutes for review and approval for March 10th, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 5-0-0.
Mr. Chair, I move the executive session meeting minutes for review, approval, but not release for March 10th, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 5-0-0. Citizen in business time, are there any citizens who wish to address the Board about a topic that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move right to the public hearing for street acceptances. Riverbend Road and Phalanx Street, vote to lay out the way. Can I open, can we open the, uh, public hearing?
Mr. Chair, I move the Select Board open the public hearing and waive the reading of the hearing notice and the legal ad.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 5-0-0. Do we have an intro?
Absolutely. The Department of Public Works has submitted a request to the Select Board that it recommend the acceptance of Riverbend Road and Phalanx Street to town meeting. At the Board's February 24th, 2025 meeting, it declared its intention to lay out the way of both roads, which is the first step in the process. The second step is this hearing tonight where the Board will solicit input from members of the public and then vote whether or not to approve the layout. We sent the Butters notices to all addresses on the affected public ways, and our DPW superintendent has spoken to a handful of residents ahead of tonight's hearing to answer their questions. Attached to this memo is a street acceptance package, which contains the plans for the roadway as well as the written bounds. If the Board is satisfied, it would vote tonight to set the bounds as presented and to recommend its acceptance to present to town meeting. I did want to note, we received one written comment, and I've now messed up the packet, from a resident on Riverbend who was unable to attend the meeting tonight. Basically explaining her desire to see that the end of the road where there's currently trees is not touched. The, the reason that this is coming before the Board is because the Sewer Commission was awarded two earmarks from the federal government for sewer expansion. These are not currently public ways, and so they wouldn't be eligible for sewer to be brought down until they became public ways. At this point, due to the continuing resolution at the federal level and the fact that the budget is not actually set yet, we're, we're likely going to have to reapply, so there's no real imminent ability to lay sewer on the road. But in order to remain eligible, we have to accept them as public ways. The plans are included here would basically be, we have no plans to change the layout of any of the, the roads. What this would mean is that they become public ways, so they are currently, per vote of this Board, two of the very few remaining non-public ways that receive snow and ice. But we wouldn't be able to use, say, Chapter 90 money to fix these roads unless they were accepted. That's one downstream positive impact, but the real precipitous here was the eligibility through the continuing resolution.
Any questions from the Board before I open it up to residents? Please.
So the correspondence from the resident that sent the, I'm just reading through the email now. I notice that they specifically call out that the last stretch of the road is not currently paved, and there's no intent to do that. Is the rest, the rest of the road is currently paved?
Correct.
Or will be paved?
Currently paved, though I don't believe the condition, I'm sure the residents can speak to it, the condition is, I'm not sure how the condition is, but it is paved. Not very well.
I'm seeing thumbs down from the audience.
Yeah, it's like good mold.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you'll, you'll get up in a moment, so. So, I, I'm just curious about the plowing conditions, and I think that's sort of part of it, right? So if it's in, uh, if it's getting plowed now, based on the conversation we've had previously, but it's a bad experience and probably digging up the road even more, what is our expectation of what the condition of the road would be going forward? That's really just sort of what I'm thinking about. You don't need to answer that right at this moment. Great.
I guess I do have a one question.
Of course.
So, the email from the resident talked about extending the road, not disrupt the trees, and it sounds like we are not extending the road.
Correct.
But when we don't, do we have an idea when they lay the sewer line down, would that disrupt the trees? I don't know if that's what really your question, their question is.
Uh, my understanding of the conversation with that resident, I wasn't there, and our DPW superintendent is sick today, so he wasn't able to join us, is that there was a desire to protect the trees because of the, the wildlife that's there, and so we certainly have no plans to pave through it. It actually would be, if you're familiar with the area, would make for a, a difficult paving job. I can't say, because the design isn't final on the sewer project yet, because they haven't gotten the design grant funding, I can't say whether or not access would need to be maintained for sewer installation down the road, but there certainly is no plans to or need to pave beyond what is already a paved roadway.
Just wanted to make sure I got that out there. I kind of guessed that's what you were gonna say. There's no way for us to determine for sure where exactly the sewer line's gonna go. We'll probably take every precaution we could. Okay, thank you.
Ironically, the Google Street View is cut off before the end of the road, so I could not ascertain what the condition was down at the end, because they didn't drive there.
Well, and there's really not much of an opportunity to extend Riverbend because there's the river, and then there's Parker Lane, I think, is there, so I mean it's...
Yeah, oh yeah, you're looking at the same thing.
It wouldn't make sense, you know, I could see where somebody would say, oh, well, there's access to land that could then be developed, and I could see where there'd be a concern, so, um, just looking at the map, I, I get it, they don't want to do that, but I don't think that there's any, there's no need for us to do that, certainly not from a sewer standpoint.
It looks like, I'm just looking at Google Maps, so 61 is from Riverbend, that's after 55. Looks like 55 is where the road ends, and then 61 must be the, the dirt area, and then beyond 61 is 12, which must be from Parker Lane, and that also looks like it's unpaved. And there's probably just trees between, how, 61 and 12? Okay.
So at this point, can I ask any residents if you would like to weigh in and address the Board and say, if, so, please come up to the, um, to the microphone, either you can go to the podium, or you can sit and relax, and, uh, but give us your name and address, and then...
My name is Keith Woodman, 37 Phalanx Street, and, uh, my concerns are, you're gonna do sewerage. Does that, you're gonna be putting water lines in at the same time as you're doing sewerage?
We don't have a plan.
Unfortunately, we don't have control over the Water District. It would make, I mean, generally, that would make sense, so you're not tearing up the road twice, and we can certainly check. I don't know what available funds the Water District has to install new pipes over there. It's completely out of the town's control, so I can't promise that they have the money, but we would certainly try to do it all at once, so that we don't have to...
Correct, yeah.
...tear up the road, pave it, tear up the road again in five or six years.
Usually, I don't know how this town, when you, when you do sewerage, your water is how you calculate how, how much sewerage you have. So how you gonna figure that out?
Tinsborough doesn't bill per usage. Every residential address pays a flat fee, no matter how much you use. The only, the only units that get paid, that get metered is commercial entities.
Okay, now, the hookup from street to house, how's that gonna work on your behalf?
Um, I'd have to ask the Sewer Commission.
There's an assessment on that.
So you don't have an answer for that?
No.
And that's not even, so, the, this hearing is just to accept the roads. The actual project to do the sewer, there would have to be a separate hearing for that.
Right, so...
So you're gonna, okay.
Yeah, up first would be getting the design funding. Before the Sewer Commission could go forward with the project to install, they would need, first, town meeting approval of the funding to actually install it, but as a part of that, there's a legal proceeding where they have to get buy-in, no pun intended, from anybody who would be connected, because typically, instead of making you pay upfront, they do it through a betterment, and so there's a whole lengthy negotiation process. I don't want to sideline the Sewer Commission, because that's a little out of my realm, but if we're only now in the design funding phase from the federal government, I can't imagine that you're looking at installation of sewer infrastructure in the next five to eight years.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
A lot of it is dependent on the federal funding they get as well. They generally don't have the means to do it entirely on their own, um, but the first step is the design funding, which they are in line to get from the federal government at this stage.
So it's, the survey, has it already been answered?
Yeah.
It's the design funding, in order for us to still get the design funds, we have to accept the roads first.
Right, right.
And, you know, the other thing, I wanted to kind of go back to the water. So what we would do is when the sewer line, we would inform the Water Department, uh, you know, that they were putting the sewer lines in, and then it would really be up to them, but we would inform them, and you would have an opportunity to talk to them also.
Okay, all right, excellent. Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Ruth Record, 37 Phalanx Street. Um, a few of my questions have already been answered. One of them is, if Phalanx Street is accepted, will it get repaved?
I can't tell you where it will end up on the schedule, but I can tell you that it has 100% better chance of ending up on the pavement schedule if it's an accepted way. The town is legally prohibited from spending private, or, public funds on unaccepted ways, so if it doesn't get accepted, I can say with pretty much certainty that it won't get paved. If it does get accepted, particularly given the unique size of Phalanx, it is likely a really good candidate. Every season, we do one really large project, and then we're able to add some smaller streets based on the cost savings we see. It would be a really great candidate for that part of it, so it may not even have to wait till its year on the road improvement calendar, but until it's a public way, it doesn't even make it on to the road improvement, like, matrix that we use.
Okay, well, hopefully. Um, my other question is, I had heard through the grapevine that, um, the end of the road possibly is going to have a cul-de-sac on it, instead of it just ending at somebody's house. Is there any truth to that rumor?
I don't believe there's any truth to that rumor. Before we reconstruct a roadway, the Department of Public Works convenes a neighborhood meeting with every resident, and so that, if that's something the neighborhood is interested in, could be discussed at that meeting. It's not something, I can't think of a project we've gone in and completely changed the layout of a roadway, um, but if we're already out there and there's a general desire from residents on the road, it's certainly not something that's out of the question. I guess I just don't know if it's something that would be met happily or with concern.
Okay.
Are you, if I could ask, are you asking because you're interested, or are you asking because you are...
Interested.
Oh, okay.
Just because when people go down there, they have to back out, and it's...
Yeah. Helpful, thank you.
I don't have to back out, so I'm, I'm okay. Um, okay, so one final question. Um, if the road is accepted, right now, the road is a very narrow road. If it is accepted, is it gonna be widened, or is it just stay as is?
We would be, excuse me, we would be accepting a road that was already non-conforming, so I don't imagine there'd be a reason for us to seek to widen it.
Okay.
Winding it is a very challenging, as you probably can assume, because you have to get easement rights, so when we accept, if we were doing this while it was still being developed as a part of a planning board development, we would require that they widen it before we accept it, but whereas we know we're accepting a road that doesn't meet the width requirements, it would just remain a non-conforming roadway.
Okay, so you're not gonna take none of my land?
No, it's not worth anybody's time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well with that, um, I think we can close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 5-0-0. I'll open it up for the Board for deliberation. Anybody have any concerns about accepting the road?
No concerns, it doesn't sound like the residents have any concerns at this point, so I'm good.
Let's lay out the way. Yep. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the Select Board set the bounds of Riverbend Road and Phalanx Street as presented, and recommend their acceptance to town meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 5-0-0.
I'm sure I'll see you at town meeting.
Thank you. All right, um, technically not a joint meeting with Capital Asset Management, but review and approve the fiscal '26 capital plan. Thank you, have a great evening.
You too.
Um, Colin, you wanna take it away?
You got it, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we're presenting the final capital plan for the fiscal year 2026, capital plan for the Board's review and approval. This comes following an affirmative vote from the Capital Asset Management Committee last week at a joint meeting with the Finance Committee. By way of background, the Capital Asset Management Committee has been meeting since fall of 2024, reviewing department requests and providing feedback to my office as we crafted the plan for fiscal year '26, with a serious consideration for future plans and the implications of the decisions that are made this year. From the beginning, we made clear our intention to both groups that we'd be relying on a mix of borrowing and some free cash to fund this year's capital plan. We're in a positive position to use borrowing moving forward, because over the last four years, we've avoided borrowing for capital by using ARPA funds, which of course now are depleted. Based on that, our focus for fiscal year '26 was addressing critical capital needs and giving us time to hit restart and refocus on true capital requests and a more comprehensive plan for fiscal year '27 to fiscal year '30. What I mean by that is, one of the things that we found in reviewing prior capital plans is that capital over the, over the last seven or eight years has really become kind of an alternative funding mechanism for some things that probably should have been included in the operating budget. It's difficult to say what is what, because obviously, most of our operating budgets can't support a one-time $15,000 request, for instance, and two or three years ago now, the Capital Asset Management Committee tweaked their bylaw with approval of town meeting to make it a little bit more reflective of our needs. But all of that said, we still see some things appear in the capital plan that really should be properly planned for in the operating budget. And so that's what our focus was for fiscal year '26, and I'll give you a quick presentation at the end of this of what we're looking at in the next four years, and you'll see that we're really trying to focus on those big items that can't be funded anywhere else. At their last meeting, the Capital Asset Management Committee voted favorably to include the following items in their fiscal year '26 plan, which we're asking your approval of tonight, and then will ultimately be approved by town meeting. The first three items relate to the exterior envelope of the Police Department, as this Board is acutely aware. We've spent a lot of time this year talking about our public safety facility needs. With this Board's blessing, we commissioned a true study of both the fire station and the Police Department to figure out their useful life, how we can better use them, but most importantly, how we need, the important capital upgrades we need to make, given the fact that we know will be in these buildings for a few more years, in the case of police, probably a little longer. The three items that appear on the fiscal year '26 capital plan were the highest priority from the architectural review that was done, Police Department window replacement, most of those building, most of those windows are original to the building, PD structure, foundation repair and waterproofing, the parking lot project that we completed this summer, or I guess really this fall, addressed a lot of the water runoff issues that were eating away at the foundation, but the years of decay remain, and so this is an important step to not just protect the foundation moving forward, but to seal off any areas where it's still exposed and could lead to future flooding. And then finally, the PD roof structure bracing. In total, it's $187,863, again, to address what the architects determined were the most critical capital needs. The cost estimates here are pretty firm, because they were just provided to us in November, and they included cost escalation. The only other item in fiscal year '26 is the replacement of the Department of Public Works backhoe. That totals $151,000. The backhoe for the Department of Public Works has seen a tremendous increase in use over the last three years, particularly now that we have a full DPW. We used to do very minimal road projects. We weren't replacing drainage structures, we weren't replacing culverts. Over the last three years, thanks to our new Superintendent of Public Works and the hard work of our Highway Division, we've been doing a lot more of that. We've done two or three drainage projects, we're doing culvert repairs where we can. And so, the backhoe that used to just be at the yard and be used to move things around at the yard is now all around town, being used constantly, and we're starting to see wear and tear. This year, on the transmission alone, we spent close to $7,000. It's not getting any younger, and we know we're going to need to replace it. Looking ahead at future years, it made sense to do it this year, because it gave us time to plan for other large items. The other thing I'll note here is, the Department of Public Works formally combined the Cemetery Commission, which was previously an elected body, with volunteers into our Department of Public Works, so the plan, as staffing allows, is to, instead of hiring a vendor to dig graves at the cemetery, we'd be able to do that now using our backhoe, adding more use to it, and so more, more reason to make sure that we, we replace it. The total fiscal year '26 recommended plan is $338,863. It is tremendously less than prior capital plans, but I would note that in fall, at Fall Town Meeting, we did appropriate $720,000 for a new fire pumper, so in true dollars, we're really spending close to 1.1 million, we just kind of got a head start on the, the fire truck. So funding sources, we talked about them. Borrowing is what we're gonna be relying on moving forward quite a bit. Aside from the $720,000 that we authorized earlier this fiscal year for that fire truck, we haven't relied on borrowing to fund our capital plan since 2020. This, of course, was due to the availability of the ARPA funds, which we used very wisely, and I think we're, we're seeing the return on investment, to use Mr. Eldridge's words. It is healthy for us to maintain our normal level of debt service. Right now, the fiscal '26 budget has our debt service at 1.4% of the general fund, which is much lower than where it could be. When reviewing the town's approval of the fire truck in October, working with Hilltop, which is the agency municipal governments use to borrow, we, we identified the ability to add approximately $1.2 million in debt to the town's debt service this year. We could add more, based on the percentages, this is just a comfortable amount that we wouldn't shock the system by adding a tremendous amount of debt in one year. Free cash has traditionally played a big role in our capital plan. One of the things that we're starting to see this year, and I expect will continue into '27 and perhaps '28, is that as your budgets get tighter, which ours are, and we'll talk a little bit about that later, you have less free cash, right? Because you're spending more of the revenue, and you're turning back less, because you're cutting out a lot of the cushion. We're expecting that the free cash certification for May will be $650,000, and I will talk a little bit about how we're spending that, but it doesn't really leave much money for capital. If you look here, we've got 465,000 worth of items that really need to be paid for. We're talking our OPEB contribution, the compensated absence fund, which serves as a lifeline if there's a major retirement, the contribution to special ed stabilization, as well as the Medicare reimbursement, which is owed to the schools, there's no way around it. If we use all of the money this year, our balance will be even less next year. So this year, I'm proposing an extremely tight budget. If we don't have any free cash going into fiscal year '26, when we certify it a year from now, it's gonna be even less. All of that in mind, last week, when we were reviewing our, our overall financial position of the town, the possibility of using the Capital Asset Stabilization Fund in lieu of free cash was explored. This will allow us to leave a bigger balance for fiscal year '27, and is in line with the purpose for why that fund was created. Currently, the balance of the Capital Asset Stabilization Fund is $1,025,446, and we have not used it, at least in the last 10 years, though we've been pretty good over the last three or four, making deposits into it. So, the options that the Capital Asset Management Committee considered while meeting with FinCom last week was to use the Capital Asset Stabilization Fund to fund entirely the backhoe, $151,000, and then borrow the 187. The borrowing of the 187 seems silly, because it's a small amount, but there is a warrant article to borrow for a schematic design of the fire department, which gives us some additional borrowing power, and on top of that, we're going to be able to roll this into a short-term ban I expect we'll need to issue this fall, to cover us on the balance of the middle school project until the MSBA issues its final reimbursement, which can take as little as six to eight months, but as long as two years. So it's not like we would only be going out to market for 187. At the very least, we'd be looking at close to half a million dollars, but if it does line up with the timing of the middle school ban, we'd be looking at substantially more. Another option is to utilize free cash, completely deplete the balance, and then borrow. The same arguments exist for the free cash, or for the borrowing. One of the options, not listed here, but of course could be a potential option, is using a mix of Capital Asset Stabilization and a mix of free cash. There's no financial advantage to doing that, right? You're paying it from one place, or you're paying it from the other. The other risk that you run when you use two different funding sources for the same item is now you're talking about two warrant articles for the same item. So hypothetically, and not that crazy things have happened at a town meeting, you could have a town meeting article to fund, say, $100,000 out of Capital Asset Stabilization, and $51,000 from a separate article for free cash. If one fails, you don't, now don't have a sufficient appropriation. I think it makes it more confusing, and at the end of the day, if our free cash ends up doing much better than I'm expecting it will next year, we could just deposit that money back into Capital Asset Stabilization. So, that said, the Capital Asset Management Committee at their meeting on March 18th voted in favor of using $187,863 in borrowing, and $151,000 from the Capital Asset Stabilization Fund, which would leave a balance of $874,000 available as of town meeting. So with that, I'm looking, I'll answer any questions, but I'd be looking for a vote from the Select Board to accept the capital plan, and it appears later on this evening on your town meeting warrant as well.
As Chair of Capital Asset, anything you'd like to add?
Um, no, I think, I think Colin, you did a great job covering that. Um, you know, part of that discussion, as you'd mentioned last week with the Finance Committee, involved, why don't we spend all of the free cash and, and use that towards, you know, the, the part of this capital plan? And we were really sort of down on that, because we don't want to get the free cash down to zero. Something comes up during the year, we don't have the ability to, to fund an unexpected expense, and so it, it makes more sense, you know, after, after all the discussion we went through at the Finance Committee, I think everybody was in, in, in agreement that it made more sense to borrow a reasonable amount of money and then fund the rest through the, um, stabilization fund.
I'll open it up to others on the Board, Mr. Moran?
The only question I had on the Police Department building window replacements, the 57863 includes, like, mitigation funds in case, since you've mentioned they were original windows, if there's further rot or anything else that may be associated with replacing, so there's mitigation funds there, or it's bid as-is, and whatever they find, they just fix and replace?
It's a mix of both. It assumes a certain quantity of that additional work. One of the things we've been very lucky about is that we have a facilities guy here at Town Hall who's very handy and did this type of work previously, so if we entered, if we encounter a situation where that didn't include enough in terms of mitigation, a lot of that can be offset by our own internal staff.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I'm good, thank you.
You're good? Select person Gilfus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, many questions. How old is the police station?
Uh, late 80s.
I think it's...
I don't know if it's about right.
And we weren't the first...
Older than that.
Yeah.
Forty years.
So that's like inappropriate window, window, for windows. Um, okay, great.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you the windows, so...
That was the one thing that I was like, windows?
Well, that particular building, this town has been historically very resourceful. No, seriously, I mean, it's, so, a lot of that work was done by volunteers. And so, there were some challenges, and there have been challenges over the years with those particular windows. There's some people that, you know, the police officers will tell you, don't open the windows, or they'll fall out.
Oh, boy.
So, there are some things in there. One of the challenges, when you go from a smaller town where everybody helps out and there's tremendous value in doing that, to, you know, saying, hmm, you know, we really need to have professionals, and there's code and all those things, so...
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I mean, the other things, it was so obvious, like the foundation repairs, the waterproofing, we want the roof to be where it belongs, but thank you, that's very helpful. For the backhoe, thank you for giving all of the context, Mr. Manager, about all of the additional use. I'm just curious, before we started using the backhoe and doing things in-house, how did we do those types of projects? Were they were just contracted out to a vendor?
Yeah, sometimes they were ignored for a period of time because the funding didn't exist, but when they were done, they were farmed out to a contractor.
So, are we seeing significant savings by doing it in-house?
Yeah, you know, this question, the town bought the parcel in nineteen eighty-three. Sorry.
He's back to the...
To the police station, thank you.
My apologies. That's the saving. No, I was asked this question at the finance committee meeting, and it's hard for me to quantify because it's not like we had a schedule of work that needed to be done. I put on the spot at the finance committee meeting, estimated, I think, over the last three years, we've saved close to two hundred and fifty thousand, I think, was the number I provided them. I spoke with our DPW superintendent afterwards to see how far off I was, and he agreed that that was a fair ballpark number.
So, even replacing the backhoe, it's paid for itself through the savings that we've had. Thank you. And then, this is more a question of not understanding how town finances are supposed to work. Is there a reason why we wouldn't just use the capital asset stabilization fund for both of these projects?
I think that question also came up at the finance committee meeting, so I'm glad...
Like, it just sounds like we have the money, it hasn't been used in ten years. Is it just like, we're supposed to carry debt because...
Well, it's a mix. Carrying debt is good, it's healthy, it helps our bond rating because we have access to the market. We're in the market, we're paying it. The other thing is the capital asset stabilization fund, it was really designed with the intent to help offset future expensive purchases. So, the one I talked about at the finance committee meeting is that in the next five years, we'll likely see a request, whether or not it's funded, to replace a ladder truck. When the ladder truck first made it on the capital plan, I think we put some number, like one point two million. They're now selling two point two, two point three million. So, what maintaining a healthy balance in capital asset stabilization does is let's say in three years, we absolutely have to replace the ladder, and our borrowing capacity and what we can afford for debt service in the general fund limits us to borrowing one point five million, we would now have some flexibility with the capital asset stabilization fund to eat away at some of the debt so we didn't have to borrow all of it. Sure, the money is available today, and technically, capital asset stabilization fund could fund a hundred percent of what we're looking to do. As you start to build the debt service into the budget, though, it's part of the budget moving forward. So, if we went two years without borrowing because we relied on capital asset stabilization, and when we talk about roads later, this is a great example, and we reduced our debt service by that much, it's just that much harder to add it back into the budget, and the less debt you have, it looks not as great.
Economics?
I can also add to that. So, there's, when you look at, so, some borrowing is good. We are really low in our borrowing. I think, what was it, one point four percent? We want that, typically, they want you between five and ten percent. We don't want to be, our threshold is seven and a half percent. So, us, it's been good that we haven't had to borrow because of ARPA. We were planning for leaner times, and during that period, we have been building up the capital asset stabilization to plan for some of those rainy days. So, it is good to have a little bit. The other is when you look at what the rates are that we get on our borrowing, they look at your total stabilization fund. So, if you go and deplete all those, and he's already talked about some additional borrowings that are coming in the future, it might not look as good. Plus, as Colin mentioned, it took us a lot to start putting stuff into the capital asset stabilization. And it hurts to pull it out, but this is where we said, you know what? Let's dip our toes in a little bit, let's not deplete it all the way. And the reality is, if you were to have an extra hundred and fifty thousand in free cash, it's not going to help you when you already have a hundred and eighty thousand. I think that's a little bit too much free cash. We were concerned, the reason that we dipped into capital asset stabilization is we were going to be at like twenty-five thousand, which we didn't, none of us felt comfortable. And that's where we said, you know, we'd really like to have that number around a hundred thousand, just to give you that comfort level. And so, that's when you sit there and say, all right, well, can we split it up? And that's when we said, no, it makes it too complex. So, that's how we ended up saying, you know what? Let's just do one of them into that. But we looked at both of those. We even looked at the debt stabilization to deal with some of the things that were in there, but that only has two hundred thousand in it. So, we looked at, I think we probably went through more scenarios this year in how we were going to do some of the fundings on the budget overall than we've had in recent past.
I have to, I just give a lot of credit to everyone that's involved in the budget process and figuring out the finances because it's not as straightforward as there is money in the bank to fund the projects that the town needs. I mean, it really is a lot of moving parts and pulling from one place to justify from another. And so, thank you for your creativity with this. I think it sounds like the right plan. Thank you. That was...
Other questions?
No further questions.
Mr. Cohane?
Thank you. People asked and answered multiple questions that I had also, but, you know, first of all, I just want to thank the Capital Asset Committee. I was on that committee for many years, and I can appreciate the number of scenarios you go through in order to come up with not only just the items that should be funded, but then, how, you know, where are you going to get the money from? You know, and as you had mentioned earlier, you don't want to take money out of too many buckets for the capital asset because we did that one year, and I do remember it got very confusing. The residents were confused, and it's much simpler to just have a couple of different places where you take the money out of. Because it really got to a point where if one of them wasn't funded, then what do we do? You know, we don't have all the funds to do it. So, I'm really glad that you did that. You know, and as for the backhoe, and, you know, the, I guess, the efficiencies from the DPW, it's good to hear the estimate, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. One of the key reasons we did the DPW is to come up with efficiencies, and I was glad to see that happening. And the other reason for the backhoe, besides the cemetery, you know, we've had some emergency culvert issues. We had a lot of water over the past few years, and a lot of culverts went under, and I would hate to not have the backhoe ready and then have to, you know, farm it out to another vendor, which would end up costing us a lot more. So, I do agree with putting that into this year's capital asset funds. So, thank you, Capital Asset Committee, for all the hard work. And I really like what they did with the items that they selected this year, police department and backhoe. I think that's the work. It really invests in a lot of the infrastructure with the police department, and really helps us out in the DPW, meet the needs of, you know, any emergencies that could possibly happen.
Thank you. Yeah, and the only other thing I would add, I should have mentioned it when you were asking the question, but when we talk about the borrowing, that there's, the borrowing for exempt items, like the debt exclusion that we have with the school. So, that goes in addition to the budget, the operating budget.
Yeah.
This borrowing is within the operating budget. So, we're not, this doesn't raise the taxes for taxpayers. Some people look at it, oh, they're borrowing, my taxes are going up. No, it's within the operating budget, and that's why we have those thresholds in there to say, within your operating budget, there's some healthy thresholds to have for, you know, X amount for borrowing that you got to cover. And because you don't want to be sitting there saying, hey, I'm just, I'm spending twenty percent on paying back debt. That's really bad.
Yeah.
So, it's not increasing taxes. This is within the operating budget, and it's part of the plan. And as Colin had mentioned, when we did the fire truck and looking at that option, the folks said, you know, you really have about capacity, no problem, for about one point two million a year in borrowing in your operating budget. Not, again, not raising taxes, this is within that budget. So, it's one of those things that people need, sometimes people hear borrowing, and they're like, oh, my God, my taxes are going up. And it's part of the operating budget.
I think what you just said there about the one point two may have answered the question that I was going to ask. So, how do you know how to calculate that line item in the operating budget? Like, how much you're accounting for?
That sounds like what we've been working on for our forecasting and our budget planning.
Well, one of the great things, we got a death schedule.
I've, yes.
So, that's how we account for it.
Great.
But we're starting to plan in for future years to sit there and say, okay, here's what we already know. There's some stuff that's falling off, like this year, we had some stuff that's falling off. We have some things that are going on, and then we sit there and say, okay, this is what we've been trying to do with capital asset and finance, to sit there and say, okay, and maybe this is a perfect segue into the thing that you're going to show us with the future expenditures for the next four years.
Yeah, oh, yes, good point.
Is what we're trying to do, we're trying to get rid of the spikes, and we're trying to plan for these things to be relatively smooth so that, you know, occasionally, you're going to have to dip into your stabilization, you know, for those types of things. Yeah, but, and then there's some times where you're going to be adding to it. But if we can smooth these things out, then Colin can sit there in his budget and say, well, I know I have X amount for, you know, capital items this year, and here's the things that we're going to plan for. So, it allows for some of that more proactive budget planning versus some of the reactive items that come with spikes.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to talk about it, Colin, but I'm very impressed that this even exists. It didn't occur to me that we had a four- or five-year plan of wish list items that are coming up, and the fact that they pretty much all, you know, year over year, are in that same range, you know, between one point one and one point five-ish. I mean, it's very clever to be able to do that, so, great, go ahead.
So, this is not a final plan, we're still tweaking some pieces of it. One of the things, to your point, Jackie, is that in the past, the five-year forecast, or the five-year capital plan, we just took whatever we didn't fund in the first year of the plan, and we moved it into the next year. And maybe we moved it two years out, but really, it was just the next year, and we never really were intentional about it. So, similar to how we've been working on an operating budget forecast for five years, we really wanted to get realistic about these needs. So, you know, fiscal year twenty-seven, some of the things that we know are going to be on there is a replacement of Tank One for the fire department. It's one of our most sought-after pieces of mutual aid. It also provides, I think, a tremendous value, since we have some neighborhoods that don't have adequate hydrants. But there are some other things in here that we're still looking at that could potentially be included in the operating budget. Perhaps not so much in fiscal year twenty-seven, but further into fiscal year twenty-eight, you can see that we've highlighted the mobile data terminals. Those are the computers in our police cruisers. In a perfect world, we would do what we do with tasers, which is rotate them out, you know, three, maybe four a year, and by doing that, you could afford in the operating budget. The challenge that we have to navigate is that, right now, we don't, we have them so that they can be pulled out of one cruiser and put into another cruiser. And with the frequency with which the MDTs are updated, if we got to a point where we had so many that aren't compatible with older versions, we would lose the ability for us to, say, Car One is in the shop, take the MDT out of Car One and put it in a new car. So, it's not impossible, but we have some more work to do on that front. Same thing in fiscal year twenty-nine, the body worn cameras and the armory updates. For starters, we haven't actually even negotiated a body worn camera program with the union, though I suspect that that's a conversation that will come up in their next contract. Those are things that maybe the initial investment has to be in capital, right? Because we don't have them today. But perhaps replacing them becomes what we do with computer replacement on the town side, which is part of the operating budget. Other notes that we made in here, you can see that at the, in fiscal's twenty-nine, fiscal year twenty-nine and fiscal year thirty, there's some paving projects at the different schools. Some of that has been addressed in a change, actually, none of it's been, this is all T E H.
T E S.
E S. T H S has been addressed, but the T E S ones, we would likely, we've made a note to ourselves that that would be lumped in with a roads program, not using the roads program funding, but to experience cost savings. So, there are still some things we're fine tuning. You know, what is the right schedule for certain vehicle replacement is a big question. Some of these other items, cat and R mess upgrades, those are shared between police and fire, and so, there's potential to do some creative thinking there. So, none of this is totally final, but this is what we know the capital needs will be. And so, now, what we're doing is, item by item, department by department, identifying alternative funding sources, seeing how you make something like this work in the capital plan. And our goal is that by the end of the summer, we can say, this is really what we're going to need to fund and give you that dollar amount idea for better planning purposes.
And I would just say, there's a couple of things to give you some examples. So, for example, the backhoe wasn't on the plan before. We, it became on the plan as part of the consolidation into DPW because we had cemetery that had equipment, we had the roads that had this, we have increasing needs on the culverts, and so, that comes on there. There's some other items, like you'll see the public school, the MacBook replacements. Those were traditionally done through capital. Actually, they were done before in like operating, but then in capital, and then now, trying to put them back into the operating. You can't just, you know, snap your fingers and say, hey, guess what? You need to find another, you know, seventy thousand dollars in your budget. So, we have to work to phase some of these in. And then there's some items that aren't even on here that might even be a little bit longer term, like the turf field, you know, at the high school. Those, we should start having some placeholders for those things because, you know, you sit there and go, it is going to really mess up all of our plans if you have a one point five million dollar item that just gets in there. And, you know, you can do it with debt exclusions, but as we talked about, a debt exclusion increases the tax rate. So, we really don't want to do that. We'd like to plan for these types of things and give ourselves some options. So, as much as, we've done a great job, this looks a lot better, but we still have some work to do to get it to be, you know, where it needs to be. But I think the departments have been embracing it, I think, and Colin, you can weigh in, you deal with the departments. But I think the departments are embracing it because it's not like they feel like they have to do a dog and pony show for capital asset to get what they want. It's like, these are my needs, and that's the key thing, this is not a wish list. These are need items. They've done a pretty good job of calling out some of the ones that you sit there and go, eh, okay.
One quick comment?
Yeah.
So, I love the comment about the dog and pony show because being a capital asset early on, I mean, everybody came in, they wanted this money, and they went way over the top, the reason why they needed it. And it really got to a point where it was like, there has to be a better way of doing this. And I think having the town manager lead the effort, and then, on an ongoing basis, all the departments can be talking to him why they need it, and Colin can ask the questions, and then Colin can come up with the plan, you know, to the Capital Asset Committee, much more structured, much more efficient, and I think, done a commendable job, Colin, in working with the Capital Asset Committee and moving that forward. It has gotten so much better from the time I first started here.
Mr. Chair, I'm curious, and maybe hearing how much has improved recently? I don't know that there's much historical data on this, but I'm curious, do we have data on like what percent of items year over year are fulfilled or are punted to next year or the year after?
Not readily, but I can get you that number. Certainly, I can combine.
Yeah, I think the last two or three years, it's probably a little bit more accurate just because I think what was happening is, people, because of the way we did it, is you put everything that you wanted on there, whether you really needed it, and then, you're hoping, all right, if I put three on there, I'm going to get one.
Yeah.
And now, it's a little bit different. There is definitely things that we do push off a year or two. There are things that we juggle. There are things like when we deal with the plows and sanding truck, where you get, oh, I know I need it, but, oh, hang on a second, this one takes a long time to get here on the delivery, and, oh, maybe I don't want it because it's not a good model. So, there is some of that juggling, but I'd say the last few years is probably going to be a little bit more accurate, and those are things that we can track on.
Yeah, I think that you made a good point there, that thinking about the percentage that's fulfilled, it's less about like how good of a job we are doing at funding, it's more about the projection and understanding how accurately we're projecting. And so, yeah, I mean, it sounds like we will be only better going forward. So, it's great.
And Colin, can you weigh in on this one? I mean, I don't know about you, but I sit there and say, when I try to do projections on this, on the budget, on this, if I'm a, if I know what next year's a good number is for next year and what those things are, and a pretty good... if I, if I'm a, if I know what next year's a good number is for next year and what those things are, and a pretty good idea, you know, for two years out, I'm ecstatic. When you start trying to project three, four, five years out, it's more just saying, let's identify what the big ones are. I think one of the things that we've also started to do is to say, okay, what did we, how many items did we fund seven years ago for things that have a seven year life on it? And say, they're gonna be coming up again.
Yeah.
And, and starting to say, we need to get those on here, because like the, uh, the SCBA air packs.
Yeah.
Those were on there before we did it. And then we were saying, guys, we gotta figure out how we get that, because you're gonna need them all the time. You know, I don't wanna be sitting here saying, geez, I don't have money for it, let's figure out how we, how you have that in your budget. Because frankly, the, the, the fire department needs to be able to have air packs. There's certain fundamental things that are there. So I, you know, I think it's with any budget, you try to look out and so you can plan. But and, and what we've also tried to do is even with like, um, with stabilization accounts, and we looked at the, the finance committee with the fifty thousand that goes into that, say, how do we deal with emergencies? Right, because you sit there and say, I, I can put this off a year. And oftentimes you can. Sometimes something breaks during the course of the year, and you need to have a mechanism to deal with, oh, oh, this thing broke. This was a, this is a big item.
Well, and for the air packs, it's interesting, because if we know that that's something that's just, it is something that they're always going to need, every few years, that's a thing. Part of me thought, well, why isn't that just accounted for in the operations budget? But you are accounting for it by having a set amount going to capital asset stabilization. Like it's, it's sort of indirect, but it's like you're considering capital needs yearly, knowing that they come up on a different rotation schedule.
Yep, yeah, the SCBA ones are a little bit tough, because I think it was similar to what you were talking about with the terminals.
The interoperability.
Yeah, you sit there, they have to have, what they need to do is they have a certain number of packs that they have. And they need to make sure that they have enough in a spare for each one. Once you start getting into the, you know, you wait a few years, now they're not interoperable, and so you have to buy a certain number. Plus, there's cost savings with quantities. So there is some procurement tap dancing that we have to do, and I think, you know, that's what we have Colin work with the department heads to say, alright, how can we do that? How do we do that best? Alright, are we good?
Yes.
This was so helpful, thank you.
Good. With that, I will entertain a motion to accept the plan.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the capital plan as presented.
Second. I have an emotion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries five zero zero.
Excellent, let me just unmute. Hello, Isabel, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Doing well, alright. Um, how do you wanna do this Isabel, do you want to share your screen so that people can see both you and the presentation, or?
So we're gonna, so just so people know, following the agenda at home, we're skipping the town manager's report.
Yes.
He skipped his own report.
Yes.
Um, and we're moving down to seven A. This is the presentation of the updated housing production plan for review and approval. So now take it away.
Excellent, thank you. We have Isabel and Chris joining us remotely from NIMCOG. Um, select board member Gilfis, and I have worked with the Affordable Housing Trust over the last several months, although it feels like it might have been longer, to take our last housing production plan, look, um, really deeply at how Tingsborough's changed, what our needs are, there's been a lot of public engagement, which I'm sure Isabel will cover. And what we have before the board, and it was included in your packet, uh, it is lengthy, so I assume all of you read it multiple times, is a final housing production plan. The one thing I wanna note before Isabel goes into the technical piece is that the reason that this matters is that having the housing production plan allows us to remain eligible for things like the Housing Choice Grant Program. We've secured probably close to a million dollars in the last several years from Housing Choice, and we plan to have an application through the one stop program this time. Um, and are submitting, there's a bunch of things, but one of them is submitting the housing production plan, which keeps us eligible. This board will remember that NIMCOG, uh, was selected to do this work through a technical assistance grant. And so this was not something that the town's budget, um, had to support. So with that, Isabel, you can do a much better job than I can presenting, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Colin, um, I'll quick, uh, share the presentation, I'll try and keep it to about fifteen minutes. Sorry, I'm not used to, uh, using Google Meet, so, um, try and, can everyone see?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. So good evening, everyone, um, my name is Isabel Emmett, I am a regional land use planner with NIMCOG. With me tonight is my supervisor, Chris Hayes, Housing and Economic Development, Development Manager at NIMCOG. Uh, I'll be just, uh, presenting the purpose of the housing production plan, some of its primary findings, and finally, the strategies that NIMCOG advises that the town of Tingsborough focuses on as they, as they think about implementation of this HPP. And, uh, like I said, I'll try and be fast, but, uh, if we could leave questions for the end, I'd appreciate it. So. Sorry?
Are you able to put it in presentation mode right now, like we see the sidebar?
Oh, I thought it was in pre, it, it's on presentation mode on my screen, hmm. Uh, one sec.
That's okay, that's fine.
Sorry about that, I'll try and, how about now? Can everyone still see it?
Uh, no, left.
Okay, um, oh, sorry. Show. Sorry about that, everyone.
Oh, you're fine, don't belabor it, if you wanna just share again and we'll see how it goes.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There we go.
Excellent.
Well, you certainly hit the correct button Isabel, but maybe it's something with Google Meets is not letting it happen.
Oh, sorry about that.
If, if you'd like, I think I know how to share it, I can, I can, I can share screen and, and just do that slide.
Okay, thanks, Chris, sorry about that.
No, it's Tingsborough is unique, not many people use Google Meets like we do. We are, exactly.
I'll just take me one moment. How's that for everybody?
There we go.
Beautiful.
Okay, so I, I think we can move to the next slide. So just a brief overview about the plan. At this point, we're in the final phase, fin, uh, finalization, uh, we started this process back in July. Our first step was primarily just to get everyone to take a breath, uh, understand where the town was standing in terms of housing issues. October through November, we were taking stock of what we were finding. And November through December was mainly a talk about what's next stage. So at this point, we're looking to finalize the plan, uh, have the planning board and select board vote on adoption, and submit to EO HLC for approval. Uh, just a, a brief, uh, just to differentiate between the executive summary versus the full plan. The executive summary is a standalone document, uh, educational for both residents and committees, it's about fifteen pages. Whereas the full plan is more of a reference guide, and it's much, much longer, and it's what's submitted to EO HLC. So how the town may use the housing production plan, as Colin discussed in his introduction, introduction, it is a roadmap of strategies on which to start a public process of study and inflammation to address housing needs. It provides advertising to developers on what Tingsborough wants to see in terms of housing. It helps the town prioritize its housing activities, uh, can serve as a guide for considering what to ask for in friendly forty Bs, useful for grant applications, as well as a guide for considering affordable housing trusts and CPA investments. So looking at some of our findings, um, our first finding is housing prices are rising much faster than median incomes. Uh, finding two, there's a need for homes to serve the four hundred households that are severely cost burdened households, most of them extremely low income. This is about ten percent of Tingsborough's total households who are severely cost burdened. Finding three, there is a need for homes that are attainable for young people to establish new households. The population between fifteen and thirty-four years old increased by seven percent between two thousand and twenty twenty. The number of households headed by people of that age group decreased by forty percent at that time. This indicates that fewer young people can afford to move out from their parents into homes of their own in Tingsborough than they were, than they had ten years ago. Finding four, there's a need for homes that are affordable to the town's workforce, which is largely at or below eighty percent area median income. So you, as you can see, the average Tingsborough teacher salary is at seventy-seven percent AMI. Uh, two retirees with the Massachusetts average social security would be at thirty-five percent AMI. So that just gives a sense of where, uh, incomes are falling with regard to area median income. Finding five, although the number of duplexes and multifamily units have increased, there is a need for additional housing choice, including smaller and more accessible units. These quotes that we have here were taken directly from the first of our two surveys. Uh, this was done during our take a breath phase, where we were primarily focusing on what challenges should, should we be focusing in on amongst Tingsborough residents. Finding six, there's a need to support, for support for the towns most vulnerable, including those at risk of eviction. Tingsborough saw, saw a rate of fifty-four point zero one eviction filings per one thousand renters, highest in the NIMCOG region between April and September twenty twenty-four, and this is the third highest rate in the state. And in addition, Tingsborough does have a lower proportion of rental stock, rental housing stock compared to Greater Lowell and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as a whole. Finding number seven, housing development can and should advance the town's master plan goals. Smart housing production can advance the following master plan goals in addition to housing affordability goals. These include climate change resiliency, protection of natural resources, interconnected networks of bicycle and pedestrian facilities, and economic development. So having summarized those findings, we'll go on and look at strategies and, uh, priority strategies, based on the goals that the plan outlines. So we've organized these strategies into, I believe it's four different categories. Uh, under zoning, we recommend prioritizing these three strategies. First, amending the zoning bylaw to allow mixed use and multifamily housing as of right or by special permit in the industrial one light district. Two, identifying zoning amendments in key locations to allow the production of single family attached units, duplexes, triplexes, quadruplexes, and apartments. And three, updating the zoning bylaw to comply with the twenty twenty-four amendments, uh, to the zoning act of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which allow ADUs in single family zoning districts by right. And these, these strategies advance goals numbers two, three, two, three, four, and seven. Under policy and investment, we recommend maintaining the subsidized housing inventory list, keeping records of regulatory agreements, deed restrictions, home and rental prices, and other unit data. This advances goal number one, as well as the promotion and incentivization of the development of ADA and universally accessible housing units, which advances goal six. Uh, as far as new plans and studies, uh, we want to encourage the development of multifamily housing at the Northwest Middlesex Road and Pheasant Lane Mall parking areas, sub-district overlays. This, this strategy would advance goals one, two, three, and seven. These two districts are two of the three MBTA, uh, zoning districts that are likely to see development in the short to midterm. Under public outreach, education, and board development, uh, we recommend coordinating planning efforts for multiple committees through annual all committee meetings to build shared goals, which advances every goal. And to provide information about regional and community-based services to people at risk of or experiencing housing instability. This includes foreclosure, eviction, and legal assistance, which advances goals numbers, uh, goals, uh, five and eight. So, um, if anyone has any questions or comments, uh, Chris and I are available to answer them, thank you all.
Yes, thank you, good, uh, Colin, you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing, I wanted to thank Chris and Isabel for their work on this. Um, Isabel and I have been communicating about this for quite some time, so I'm sure she is just as well as I am to be at this point. The one thing I wanted to note is that the full plan, which is available online for folks to see, and it has been in a variety of forms, all of these recommended strategies, the vote of the select board tonight to adopt the housing production plan, and the vote of the planning board to adopt the housing production plan, doesn't make any of those strategies the law of the land. We talk about housing development, all of that still has the regulatory process, the planning board would still have to approve it. So if, if somebody's watching this at home, as I'm sure dozens of people are tonight, these are a roadmap to getting to some of the end goals that were in the housing production plan. But a vote of this board endorsing the plan, and a vote of the planning board endorsing the plan, don't take away any of the regulatory proceedings that would happen. It's not like once this is adopted, my office and staff across town are just immediately hitting the ground running, trying to accomplish these. It's still will require input and approval from a variety of stakeholders, including this board and the planning board. I just wanted to clarify that.
And, and Mr. Chair, and some of these would also have to go to town meeting.
Absolutely, yep.
So a lot of the policy changes here, probably the majority of them, the big ones, is gonna also have to go to town meetings, so.
And, and to be clear, Colin, we're, we're accepting the plan. Yes. And then we, we would accept it, I guess the, the motion's gonna be to accept it and to, uh, make it so it can be submitted to the, um, EO HLC, whatever.
Correct.
I'm sure I missed some of the letters.
I think you did it all.
Hey, imagine that. Um, so, so that I, just because I, I think that's a, an important thing, because some folks get hung up and they say, oh, the select board is endorsing this, and the town's gonna have all this production, and it's like, no, no. All we're saying is that this is a plan, it's been worked through with a variety of folks across multiple. Did, did you wanna weigh in on who worked on this, on the production plan, because we already know that, that you were, who else?
Yeah, I mean, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you Isabel and Chris. I mean, this really has been, um, quite a labor of love, and certainly NIMCOG has done the heavy lifting. But, um, this being, you know, part of the work of the Affordable Housing Trust and the folks that have been, um, engaged in doing that work, I think, um, you know, many of us attended many meetings with NIMCOG, and, uh, there were a lot of outreach engagement opportunities. Um, the Affordable Housing Trust helped with some of that lift, you know, getting messaging out to residents. Uh, we wanted specifically to make sure that we included the perspective of renters, as well as, uh, the property managers in town. So folks that are involved in, um, the multi-unit housing, so getting their perspective. uh, the property managers in town, so folks that are involved in um, the multi-unit housing, so getting their perspective. Um, and I, I don't know what I was expecting out of this, um, but I think some of the key findings were surprising to me. I think um, in terms of where we sit compared to our neighbors and, you know, people of similar size, I think that we have some good opportunities to grow. Um, and certainly for me, as someone who rents in town and can't afford to buy a house in Tingsborough today, um, I, I think this validated a lot of what I was feeling and so seeing data about that, um, I think was meaningful for me as an individual, but certainly um, knowing the way that this is going to impact our residents and the folks that really need support, um, I'm really grateful that we did this work and um, to your point, Mr. Chair, I think there is a piece of us accepting it is, is accepting that we think, you know, endorsing that we think that this is a good path forward. And while we agree that there are certainly administrative, uh, I don't want to say barriers, but there are checkpoints along the way before any of this would go into place. Um, I think that it is important for all of us to say like this, this is advancing the goals that we're all uh, committed to. You know, I, I don't want this to feel like a passive vote. I want us to really feel with our full chest that this is the right thing for the town to do, so. I encourage us all to be honest about if we're committed to this, you know.
Well, with that, I'll, I'll open it up for questions. Mr. Moran, did you want to?
Oh yeah, sure. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and you know, thank you for the work that was done on the committee. Uh, I really appreciate, you know, the effort going into it. I just have one kind of nuanced thing, maybe controversial, part of the presentation. Mr. Hayes, if you could bring up page eleven, it really kind of concerned me to have in quotes that Tingsborough is loaded with mansions. I think that that is a startling thing to state since that most of the people in town are of, you know, salt of the earth people, and I don't think that we um, we, you know, we might have a few areas or sections of town that have um, homes that are probably categorized as mansions or of that nature. Um, I would recommend actually removing that statement because I think that, you know, making the, the delineation between people who actually, you know, work hard and save their money and build a house shouldn't be made out to be scapegoats, just that they own a house that has a definition of mansion in your terms, but I don't necessarily think that I would think, you know, Richie Rich to me, the cartoon from the nineteen eighties or nineties or whatever, that, that would be mansion stuff. Right? So I think that it's um, you know, not a fair assessment of Tingsborough. I think that there's a lot of number and, you know, a lot of true numbers in the facts that are presented with the ability to afford homes and young people moving in. But we are definitely not a Carlisle or a Cambridge or any of these other places that may have homes that take up entire sections of, of, of blocks, so um, I find it, you know, to be, Tingsborough is, you know, a great town. It has a lot of great people in it, but I, I don't think that some of the people who live over by the school off of, you know, some of the main roads are considered mansions. So that's my protest vote, so I, I may vote no, just for a protest.
Just to be clear though, this is not.
Because I don't like the language that labels too many mansions. Why are we looking at that? Why are we looking at divisive language?
Just to be clear though, this isn't NIMCOG's language, this was a survey from a resident.
Doesn't matter.
That was what, that was what somebody had said.
I think that, that, that may be a few, uh, how many votes did that get? How many people had stated that? Was it a thousand people had stated that or was it three or four? That's the point I'm trying to make, is that penalizing people for working hard and being successful shouldn't be something that um, should be done, and we also shouldn't encourage that type of animosity on a public report. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm actually curious if, I'm just pulling it up now because I don't know the answer offhand. Um, if in the PDF of the production plan, if it uses any of that same language that's in the presentation, so I'll just double check it while we're continuing to talk.
Yeah, that's, that's just all I wanted to bring up.
Mr. Schneider. Go, go ahead, Chris.
Yes, um, to, 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 uh, sorry, I don't know who's talking, so either.
Selectman Moran, thank you. That was Selectman Moran.
Um, so, uh, yes, that was, that was a quote from our survey. I believe we have kind of the verbatim responses in appendix uh, from, from the surveys, uh, including um, a variety of opinions. Um, this one was just elevated as it illustrated one of many viewpoints that we heard uh, in the presentation. Uh, it wasn't ness- I, we can double check to make sure it's not in the actual text of the plan. I don't believe we actually do have specific quotes in the actual text of the plan, but we can definitely double check that. Um, I also wanted to make sure to um, uh, mention the vote, uh, according to the EO HLC guidelines would be for the planning board and the select board to adopt the plan. Um, but as Colin mentioned, that doesn't necessarily mean that every strategy is therefore implemented. Um, and in fact, we used uh, public outreach to determine, um, and by we, I mean Colin and uh, the NIMCOG team working together to put uh, perhaps some of the most complex or controversial items in out years. And we definitely indicate a process of the leads uh, indicated for each action, say the planning board or the select board or town staff, to evaluate those strategies uh, to determine how they can most effectively be adjusted to meet Tingsborough's goals. Um, and if they do indeed meet Tingsborough's goals. So those are kind of put into out years to give enough time for the town staff and other agencies to be able to continue exploring those strategies and working toward which pieces of them make the most sense for Tingsborough, which ones don't make sense for Tingsborough. Um, whereas some of the uh, ones that have more universal support were put towards the beginning of the plan. Um, those are a lot more um, in terms of maybe working uh, together with supports and committees. Um, different ways the uh, Affordable Housing Trust could uh, um, undertake its activities, et cetera. So those are in the near term. And then some of the larger uh, changes that might need more discussion, thought, evaluation are in the late term. Um, so I hope that helps clarify the acceptance versus adoption question.
Yeah, yeah, so um, it sounds like, so relative to that one slide, right, we look at that, that one bubble, you sit there and go, the first part is fine, right? Because, okay, this is, I, I feel that we need more modest housing. The rest of the part, probably not necessary to deliver the message and it could be construed as inflammatory when you look at it and, I mean, I don't know, I, I look at it and say, I don't want to feel like I'm guilty be, you know, that's what it was at the time, right? You sit there and say, um, it's, it, we need to look at all sizes of houses and, and, you know. So that's what I, I, I think that's probably when we look at this and we publish certain things, let's make sure that we have that, that context that's in there, but relative to the adoption, acceptance, you know, I'm hopeful that um, we'll be in a position where we can look at this plan, because this is, one of the things that I look at is, this is for the next five years, right? It's, some of these things, I look at them as being more than five years out. And so it's, it's hard for me to sit there and say, hang on a second, um, can we do all this in five years? And I don't want to jump ahead to my stuff, but that, that'll be one of the things that I'm going to try to understand. But I think if, if we were to look at the language that we use, and, and I get it, it's a direct quote, right? I, I read it, eh, direct quote, sometimes, you know, um, perception is reality. However, it might be sitting there saying, well, not everybody's going to go into that level of detail and they're going to look at it and say, well, hang on a second, they're trying to get rid of, they want shacks and no mansions. I don't think that's, that's what we're talking about here.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I think um, I am grateful that you pointed that out, Selectperson Moran, because we were very careful to not use inflammatory language in other parts and actually dialed back some language. Um, because we want this to be nonpartisan, non-controversial. We want this to be something that residents from across town can agree is the right thing for us to do. And so we certainly were mindful about some other places where language could have turned people off. Um, and we wanted to be really careful about that. Having searched the full PDF, the three hundred page PDF, um, of the housing production plan, that quote is not in there even in the appendix. The only thing that sort of um, could be construed that way is there is a section with some statistics about uh, larger, single-family homes on large lots, so uh, houses that are four or five bedroom and that statistically like compared to uh, duplexes or multifamily housing, so that's really the only.
That's appropriate to have those types of statistics and numbers to say.
And that's the only thing that I see that's even kind of related.
It's more about data.
Yep.
As opposed to um, opinions.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Schneider.
I have a question on key finding number six. It, it surprised me that we have the third highest eviction rate in the state. Do we have any color around that? Is it, is it just because of the number of rental units we have in proportion to that total housing? But it, you know, it just, it just, it just struck me as, wow, we're, we're, we're that high?
Yeah, if we have a low number, right, so you get numerator and denominator and if we've got two evictions, but we have a small thing.
We can't be the only town that has a small number of rentals.
We actually just, I wonder, Colin, do you, I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, when we um, Kimberly O'Brien and I presented to CPC about Affordable Housing Trust, um, seeking funding for emergency rental assistance, specifically because of concerns around when someone gets to the place of eviction, that, just the catastrophic effect that that has on people. So if we can have a fund for people to not reach that place. Um, and so we did look at some statistics, not specifically about our eviction rate, but about the number of renters. I'm curious, this rate, the fifty-four out per one thousand renters, we only have like six hundred rental units. So I wonder, um, Chris or Isabel, do you, where did that stat come from?
Seeing if the uh, source is on the slide, otherwise I'd have to look at the plan to find the source.
I just can't remember.
A statewide source.
I think you're right that it's probably a small number based on a small number, and so it looks like a high percentage.
Yeah, just like I say, I, I, I just am imagining, we're not the only town that has a small number based on a small number. There are a lot of bedroom communities that, that have a small number of rental units. I just didn't know if there was any color around that, you know, and then particularly in, in, in following, you know, Selectperson Moran's comment, you have one, one slide that talks about mansions and the next slide is talking about evictions.
Right.
It just, it's, it's percept, some of it's perception and it rubbed me differently than it did you, but then, then this, perhaps this statistics or a statistic rubs me differently than it does other people because it just, it just, I, I don't want to be in the top three towns for anything like that.
I think slide eight, the key finding number two.
Yep.
When this stat was shared, I, I don't know, nine months ago, um, I remember also being surprised by the distribution of those numbers, that we have people who are um, above median income and then a whole lot of people that are extremely low income. But in the middle, they, it is sort of like that bell curve, the reverse bell curve, um, is sort of unfortunate. And that was one thing that we had talked a lot about um, in meetings with NIMCOG, just that like, we have options for affordable housing, maybe not enough, but we do have paths for people
Yep.
who are extremely uh, cost burdened. And then there's a, on the other side of the spectrum, people that are perhaps more comfortable with their housing costs. But it was the middle that was really a challenge and for people who would like to rent or would like a starter home, something like that, like that was actually the place that was harder is um, is being in the middle there, and that's, I think, part of the reason why you see those extremes.
Hmm.
But that's hard to address, that's part of, part of the challenge.
Yep, thank you. Otherwise, it's a great report, a great summary, thank you.
Selectperson Gilfis, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks.
There's a question about the source of eviction filing rates. That's the uh, Mass Housing Partnership uh, eviction, excuse me, the Housing Stability Monitor, which is, which is based on um, states, uh, it is filings, not uh, executions. So that means that it's not that, it's not fifty per thousand evicted, it's fifty per thousand beginning with eviction procedure, uh, proceedings. Uh, there were thirty-one eviction filings over the last six months in Tingsborough, um, during that period. That's pretty similar to uh, Drakeit, which had thirty-eight, Chelmsford that had forty, um, Andover that had forty-one, but all of those other towns have a, a lot more rental units.
Yeah.
So the percentage is, is much less. Uh, so that's, that's how that um, number was derived.
I wonder, Chris, do you think that that speaks to the administrative efficiencies of the people who are filing those eviction reports? I, I ask because many of our rental units are in um, like rental complexes where there's staff that's able to oversee the, that administrative burden to file those eviction reports? As opposed to if people are renting in an individually owned home or something like that, maybe the owner doesn't seek the process because, you know, it's, they're only doing that once a however long. Um, whereas someone that maybe is used to filing those reports, it's very easy for them to do at scale.
Uh, pretty much sure, I, I don't, I, I, I wouldn't want to speculate.
Okay.
Um, so uh,
I'll speculate instead.
Additional research. Um, I do know that to be evicted, you have to have a lease, sometimes have a lot of units, but don't have as many leases, uh, because people are month to month. But whether that impacts things in Tingsborough or not, I, I, I don't have the data to say.
Thanks, Chris. No further comments unless I can help answer.
Select, uh, thank you. Just want to thank everybody involved in this. Um, you know, I know this is a very long process. Um, NIMCOG, I guess the Housing Committee, uh, zoning, zoning. I mean, there's so many people that are involved in this, I wouldn't be able to mention them all since I wasn't involved in the process. But, you know, I just want to really thank everybody. I, I know this takes a lot of time and a lot of effort. And, you know, I know the resource that NIMCOG brings to the table, they do an awful lot. Um, they have a lot of detail, um, because they do this with, you know, all the communities uh, in, in our particular region. I mean, the key thing with this is, you know, we, we, we go through, we, we do the, you know, we do this plan. And this is, again, this is just another step in the whole process. And somebody really needs to own this. Like when we did the master plan, you know, we had probably a thousand different recommendations. And those recommendations were what you really, we wanted, we wanted to do more exploration to determine that we should move that forward, right? And a lot of these, I kind of see in the same way, before it goes to town meeting and have a lot more meetings about one particular topic and everything else. But I guess the key thing is, you know, now that we have this plan, who is the person or persons or committee or group that is trying to look at this constantly and trying to move steps forward?
Um, ultimately, each recommendation has assigned to it, uh, either department or board. I think a lot of it will be three boards, the select board, the Affordable Housing Trust, and the planning board.
ZBA.
And the ZBA as well.
Okay. Uh, and is that listed like we have in the master plan, which de, which departments are responsible for which ones and then the priority for high, medium, low or whatever? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Great job, everybody, by the way. Yeah, so thank you. Some questions that will help me and hopefully some others who are um, following up on this. Um, are there particular parameters for production, right? We're talking about sitting there saying, we have a production problem, we don't have enough inventory to meet the needs of people that are already here. We're not talking about necess- I mean, if people want to come in and we'd like to, you know, be able to do that, we're, we're certainly going to consider that, but we don't even have enough for the people who are here, right? There, there are people who live here today that can't afford um, to move out of their parents' house. There are people that live in their house today and can't go anywhere else, they can't, there, there's no downsizing anymore
Mm-hmm.
um, because of challenges. So, and I'll, I'll get into that on the, the other side of the equation. But relative to production, are there any parameters that we're trying to work under to say, look, you can't just sit here and build, build, build. We, we don't have that capacity. There are certain parameters, whether it's infra- There are certain parameters, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's schools, whether it's uh public safety, roads, all the things that, that we say. When we look at, because this is for the next five years, do we have anything on there that says, how do we make it so that we uh grow smartly, right? The smart growth is something that's been taken. But you sit there and go, how do we do it so that it's, it's reasonable? Because I don't think any of us sit there and say, we should have full-blown houses everywhere and, and duplexes going up and apartment buildings everywhere. I don't think any of us are saying that. That's not, so how do we um, were there any parameters that put on that to say, hey, look, we can only have X percent of growth over the next five years with anything that we do to maintain that?
Absolutely. The, the plan um for starters doesn't say in the next five years, you must construct X number of units. What it does do is it talks about strategies that aren't simply around building new units. So it talks about looking at existing zoning. It talks about maintaining the affordable units that we already have. You mentioned some of our biggest constraints, sewer infrastructure. There is very seldom, very few. There are very few areas in town where there is remaining sewer capacity. And so we can have the most detailed plans in the world. But until several other lines down the system address sewer capacity, we can't, we can't do anything. Um so I think that the, the parameters come in with the various strategies that really aren't, you must build X number of units in the next five years, but rather here are the issues and infrastructure is some of the issues that we identify in the report. Here are some more global strategies to address those various little pieces so that you can get as much out of a plant as the community A can support, infrastructure supports, and there is a, a desire to support.
I think also, if I may, um-
Sure.
Part of the reason that the PDF of the plan is a hundred and fifty pages-
Yeah.
Um is because there is a tremendous amount of detail in there that um just couldn't possibly be captured in the presentation and the amount of time that we gave Isabel. Um but essentially for every strategy that Isabel spoke of, there are like sub uh activities outlined with, you know, a paragraph at least um with really like tactical advice on how to do that. So for example, strategy four was about um the Affordable Housing Trust investments and activity. And there's subbullets including building partnerships between the Affordable Housing Trust and nonprofit and state agencies and having regular meetings with them. Um another point of studying the potential impact of partnerships by creating Tingsborough-focused first-time home buyer or emergency rental assistance program like we've been working on.
Yep.
Um and so I think it certainly would take time for us to actually like sit with all of these suggestions and map them to people. But I think that NIMCOG has done a really tremendous job of giving some tactical things that we could say, these five things feel very accessible to us in the short term. Those are things that could be long-term goals. Um so I, I don't think we've talked about specific parameters the way that you just asked about. But I think that there are things in the production plan that could probably get us to that place.
Yeah, and, and to, to further expand on it, so Colin, what you've just said, I, was the way I look at it, right? I sit there and say, we have a fundamental problem around infrastructure and resources to support additional housing.
Yeah.
Right? Yet, there's not an item on here that says, you need to address the fundamental infrastructure problems before you can re- The, the reason I'm concerned, hang on, I'll let, I'll let you- The reason I'm concerned is if I go and put in zoning and I put in all these things and, and I have all this stuff in there, yet I don't have the infrastructure for it. Then aren't I putting the cart before the horse there? And so I, 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 I believe in all these things, but I, I think, I don't know if it's the elephant in the room, but I sit there and say, do we need to address some of the fundamental infrastructure things? Before we can sit there and say, hey, uh here's some great housing plans that we need.
And there is a section on infrastructure and service limitations-
Yep.
That includes sewer capacity, water supply, transportation. Um so there are also some, some things in there that speak to that a little bit.
And should they bubble, I'm just wondering whether it should bubble up as being one of these priority strategies to sit there and say, are we miss-
Elevate that.
Yeah, are we sitting there missing out? Cause I, I mean, like I said, I, I would have some concerns if somebody had a great plan and they said, oh, I need the zoning and I need to do these things. And then something's in there and we, we don't have the infrastructure to support it. Whether it's traffic, whether it's sewer, whether, whatever it is, I just sit there and say, we, we ultimately need to maintain the character of the town, right? We still need to grow, it, we need to have planned and smart growth. It, it can't just be wild and, and unplanned. Uh so, you were gonna say?
I was just gonna add that, you know, fortunately, Tingsborough is above the threshold for the affordable housing units, which is kudos to previous boards and this board and many, many boards who helped that along over the past X amount of years. The other piece of it is this aligns to the MBTA plan, which fortunately down three A does have the sewage capacity, does have some of that stuff for those additional housing units to be put in. Um at, you know, Pheasant Lane Mall, that parking lot that everyone talks about, that's, I know it would create traffic. But it is zoned for it now. And the question is, you know, does the town manager? Well, that's what it says, town manager there put out a marketing packet, which they probably already have, that canvases developers and say, hey, let's do that. And then you could look at the uh report that's been provided with the due diligence work from um our partners at NIMCOG and also the people who participated from town would be great, right? So I mean, the, the things are there. You're not going to put infrastructure down the road that we looked at earlier tonight to accept, to build housing there. That would be, you know, the survey says it's not gonna happen. But, well, it's a real valid thing. So we, where we do have the infrastructure, where we've already had the mandate from the state to meet the MBTA zoning priorities that was done over the past year or two with other boards and then feeding into, into us was fantastic work. So we're already there. The question is, how do you solicit these developers to want to develop those areas as a equitable and profitable business for them? At the same time, offering a percentage of those housing units of the overall apartments as the affordable ones or um you know, concerning, you know, those types of individuals. So I think we, we have the answer. The answer might not be more infrastructure, because I don't think people want the roads torn up to put something down in an area that may not be already zoned via MBTA. It would just simply be soliciting the um developers to come in town and say, hey, this is a viable project.
Which was my next question, by the way.
And if I may jump slightly ahead, we haven't heard yet and, you know, I'm, I'm optimistic, but I can't guarantee. To Mr. Moran's point, one of the things that developers will want to know about that parcel in question is, given all the various limitations over there, how many units can they actually put? With the help of NIMCOG, we applied through the MBTA Catalyst Fund, which is a grant out, available only to communities that are compliant, to hopefully do a study on that one parcel to say, given the site constraints, given what is available over there, the unique nature of it being right next to New Hampshire, how many units can we actually fit? And then that certainly feeds into Mr. Moran's point about direct outreach um for, for development. And I, I just want to say, for those that are weary about development, the other advantage about doing that study through the MBTA Catalyst Fund is that it will truly tell us the impact and what the limitations are. So you talk a lot, Mr. Alge, about smart growth. That will help inform that. So we're not just saying, you know, the zoning bylaw says you can fit X number of units in this dense area. We will have done the work, assuming we get the catalyst grant, they've started making some awards, to say, here's what's reasonable, here's what's feasible, given traffic, giving sewer infrastructure. So thank you for that point, Mr. Moran, because that would be the best approach.
Yeah, and that led into my, it's perfect, you're, you're reading my mind, because my, my big question around a lot of this is, one of the challenges that is happening across the Commonwealth and, and pretty much everywhere around housing is that what do developers want to build? They want to build the buildings that are going to give them the most profits. And unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, they're those larger one, look at Toll Brothers, right? Let, let's look at that. Those are-
Sound like mansions to me.
Those are nine hundred thousand dollar homes. Um you're not downsizing, right? I look, I'm an over fifty-five person and I sit there and say, I gotta take out another loan to move, to downsize? I don't, I don't know about that. Um so I think we have to figure out, how do we, how do you get that balance of the developers that are going to build the right kind of home that maintains or the right kind of housing, I can't say home.
Mm.
Right, the right kind of housing to maintain the character, to work within the infrastructure that we have, to um, you know, worth it. And that's the balance that we need to achieve on all of that, because it, it can't just be it, it's not just being, it can't just be addressed by production.
Mm-hmm.
We need to balance all those things together.
In fact, it's almost the opposite. Like instead of just seeking rapid production, we really want to be slower, intentional. Hopefully bring in developers that um share our values about those things. And um I think some of that is also captured in the production plan about like um environmental sustainability and having walkable neighborhoods and things that are close to amenities. And um I think finding developers that are committed to that same goal is much more important than just churning out production.
I would make sure that any presentation, remember, the, the folks that are going to be reading this, they're probably going to be reading these slides and those, so it, we need to make sure that we're capturing those items to say that we're working around, working within the infrastructure. Maintaining the, the, finding people that share our values and, and have, if tho, those are important, we need to make sure that they're front and center. I agree that we have a production capacity problem.
Yep.
But we need to make sure that it's, it's done with um that intentional thought and uh the speed at which you were, you were talking about. And I know um Chris is probably chomping at the bit to, to weigh on something. I didn't, I, it's harder when, when you're remote to, for me to see that you might have anything. Was there anything that you wanted to add rela, following up all of our questions and comments?
No, I don't necessarily think so. I think that you are, you are circling around some of the great uh kind of questions of, of the plan that it tries to tackle. Um I do believe that Colin uh really hit the nail on the head in saying that the most imminent and promising development opportunity is the MBTA communities area. And that uh potentially, uh that is, that is a recommendation in the plan even to study that in terms of infrastructure, terms of capacity and in terms of vision. Um I would advise against being too much like, we need developers who share our values, because that might read uh, that might try to raise somebody who shares your values, but reads that as, boy, Tingsborough sounds hard, hard to work with. On the other hand, if you clearly state your values in the plan, I think that really helps uh a, a developer realize what kind of town uh Tingsborough is and that they might want to work with you on particular plans. We do have a section of, and it's, it's mandated that you need attributes of affordable housing. Basically attributes of all housing and it has certain elements such as utilizing infrastructure that already exists, such as having a variety of housing types uh put together. Um so that you don't have just a huge tract of large housing or one big tower, but you have a, a variety of um small to mid-sized buildings um that provide a lot of housing choice. So it has a lot of those type of attributes. And also that highlights the um variety of, of, of transportation choices, walkability, bikeability. And other sustainability features and especially preservation of critical open space uh that, you know, we heard loud and clear, that's really important. And something we love about Tingsborough is we, as we visit. So um I would, I would encourage you to take a look at that section, make sure that it, it, it matches, matches uh what you believe Tingsborough represents. But I think both uh the guidance of Colin and the Affordable Housing Trust and the um surveys we received that we, we did hit as, as, as much of that as we could.
So I guess the question, Colin, is, are you looking for us? I think there's a few small suggestions. There's some things in tone and, and perhaps highlighting certain areas in the presentation. I don't think it really changes the, the plan in any material way. Um where it's more, how do we best communicate that and, and then execution? Based upon that, what, what are you looking for from the board relative to this?
I, I think you're right. The, the, there was certainly feedback about the presentation, their schedule to present the, to make that presentation again to the planning board. So we can regroup with Chris and Isabel about making the edits to the presentation before they go to the planning board. I didn't hear anything from the board tonight that would change the context of the housing production plan itself. And so if I'm hearing that correctly, then tonight I would s, look for a vote of this board to adopt the housing production plan. Not the presentation, the actual plan, and we can work with NIMCOG to update those slides before they go to the planning board in two weeks.
Okay. Is there any, um, does anybody have any concerns about that before the planning board sees it? Seeing shaking of heads?
No, no.
So no issues there? Okay. So I will entertain a motion for that.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Tingsborough Housing Production Plan as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries five zero zero. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Isabel.
Thanks, Isabel. Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it.
Just have a follow-up question. You said that that was already, the larger presentation was posted on our website, town website?
Everything in your meeting packet goes online first. It wasn't called, we have posted the production plan on the website before for feedback. The only place that that presentation appears is in the meeting packet folder.
Well, not the presentation, but the bigger one.
Yeah, the bigger document, yeah.
It's on the website?
It was a news post, probably, it's probably been over a month and a half ago now since we opened the public comment period. And it also is, of course, in your meeting packet.
Yep.
Okay, did you want to do the DPW cemetery rules and regulations? Just um, just trying to figure out when we're gonna get town managers report in and-
Doesn't ma, I, I'm doing the rest of the presentation, so I'm happy to follow whatever order you'd like. There's no other guests coming, so if you want to backtrack, we can, if you want to.
So why don't we, why don't we do the town managers report?
We're skipping that entirely.
That's where all the meat and potatoes are.
Something people watch for, Mr. Moran.
Why don't, why don't we do um town managers report and then we'll hop down to the DPW, just for folks who may be waiting patiently online for the roads update. Um Jake is uh, he wasn't feeling well at the last moment and uh so we're gonna defer that to a, a future meeting, probably the next one. Um on that update, so take it away, Colin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Department of Public Works is excited to announce that the residential yard waste drop-off site is now reopened for the season. The site is located on Bryant Lane and is accessible seven days a week as of now. We, we had originally posted that it would be open during specific hours, but fortunately, we haven't really had any major issues with illegal dumping or people doing things there they shouldn't. So as long as that continues, we'll continue to provide that site uh essentially twenty-four seven, though it is not lit. So obviously, we'd advise you not to go out there at night. A reminder that it's for brushing yard waste only. We have a whole complement of other um ways for you to recycle or dispose of other items at the recycling center at the DPW yard. This is only for yard waste. Also, commercial waste is strictly prohibited. The site is monitored and there's a lot more information on our website about how to use the site, what you can and can't get rid of there. The Attorney General's Office announced late last week that they had approved Articles Six and Seven from the Fall 2024 Town Meeting. Those dealt with amendments to the town zoning bylaw relative to sign regulations. Now that they've been approved, our planning department will work to integrate those into the zoning bylaw and get the latest version posted on our website. The Council on Aging last week hosted an appreciation luncheon for the Department of Public Works to thank them for their work over the winter. This annual event is a great way for our seniors to show their appreciation to the DPW and is always a huge hit with our DPW staff. Economic Development Director Benjamin McClure and I met with representatives from Mass Development last week to talk about ways that we can leverage their various grant programs to help jumpstart economic development with a focus on the permitted warehouse projects both on Middlesex Road and Kendall Road. Um that conversation, similar to the last one, focused a lot on infrastructure capacity. And they have a couple of programs that can help private developers who are facing infrastructure issues kind of get a jump start. So we'll be connecting a few people with that and hopefully that spurs some of that development. The legislature last week voted to send a bill to the governor's desk that would extend the remote and hybrid meeting authorization for municipal boards and committees through June 2027. You're probably wondering, they've extended it fourteen times. Why do we keep doing limited ones? That is Massachusetts, my friends. The final step is signature by the governor, which I expect to happen this week with no issues. While most of the meetings that we conduct here in Tingsborough are happening in person, there are- While most of the meetings that we conduct here in Tingsborough are happening in person, there are a handful of boards and committees that either meet regularly or occasionally, uh, hybrid or fully remote. It does provide some ad- advantages when there's scheduling conflicts. On a procurement front, we're currently seeking sealed bids for general services and materials for the Sewer Division of the DPW, as well as on-call emergency services for that same division. Bids for both are generally issued every three years, and we enter into three-year contracts for those services. The existing contracts will expire at the end of this fiscal year. Bid documents for both are available beginning on Wednesday this week, with bids due on April second. Last week, I awarded contracts to various vendors for materials and services for the Highway Division of the Department of Public Works. Those are also one-year contracts with fist, fixed pricing that each have two-year extensions at the sole discretion of the town. And then next week, we'll issue a request for proposals for engineering services for the Sewer Division of the Department of Public Works. The RFP will be available beginning on March thirty-first at tingsboroughma.gov, and response is due by April twenty-fourth. On a project front, last week, we wrapped up a hazardous material collection project at the former Council on Aging building on Lakeview Ave. As you'll remember, that building is slated to be demolished using funding that was approved by Town Meeting in October of 2023. We'll use the results of that survey to amend our invitation to bid and work to get that project moving as fast as possible. We found, um, some areas that we expected to have more hazardous materials had less, and then some areas where we didn't expect to find any had more, so there are quite a bit of quantities. We'll know for certain by the end of this week what those quantities are, and hopefully we're able to get that project out to bid very soon. An update quickly on the Winslow School Project. The Community Preservation Committee met last week to review a request from the Historical Commission to reallocate the remaining 1.28 million from the May 2023 CPC allocation of 1.5 million. The original appropriation was for the demolition of the additions to the building, the restoration of the original schoolhouse, and moving the schoolhouse closer to Winslow Road, tilting it slightly to face the bridge. As you'll remember, shortly after I took over, we paused the project because the estimates from our architectural firm came in higher than what Town Meeting had appropriated. The request from the Historical Commission is to take the remaining 1.2 million and use it to completely restore the exterior of the entire building. There was a lengthy discussion, and there were a lot of concerns, but ultimately, the CPC asked me to get quotes from an architectural firm to do a full cost estimate for that type of work before the CPC considers the request. Given the time that's necessary to get a firm on board, it's very unlikely that CPC is able to advance that to the May Town Meeting, even if they wanted to. We continue to seek applications to fill the vacant Assistant Town Manager role. I'm thrilled that over, that to date, we've received now nearly twenty applications, and the deadline to submit is April first. Once the deadline passes, we'll use a standard rubric to determine who gets an interview, and we'll conduct two-panel-style interviews, both featuring various town department heads, before finally introducing our selected candidate to the Select Board. Last week, we began interviews to fill the new Public Safety Administrative Assistant position, which will support the Fire Department from an administrative perspective, and will assist the Police Department on a public records request perspective. The funding is currently available in fiscal year twenty-five, because the Fire Department hadn't spent any of the money they had in place for a part-time admin, and the first full year of the salary is included in my proposed budget, which we will talk to you a little bit later. We're also currently recruiting for a full-time police officer, a part-time communications specialist in our Emergency 911 Center, and a part-time van driver at the Council on Aging. If you're ever interested in a job with the town, you can sign up for alerts. Anytime we post a job, you'll s- get an email, and you can see the current ones at tingsboroughma.gov. Couple upcoming reminders, I've mentioned it before, but last chance, the Council on Aging will host their first Evening Series program this Wednesday night, it's Bingo Night at six-thirty PM at the Center for Active Living. There's more details on the town's website, but certainly you can call the center for more details. April is Townwide Cleanup Month. For the nineteenth year in a row, residents and local businesses can obtain cleanup kits at the library, the Health Department, and the Department of Public Works. The kits can be used to clean up your neighborhood, a popular walking or recreation area, or your favorite spot to hang out in Tingsborough. Visit the DPW, the library, or the Health Department to learn more information. The deadline to pull nomination papers to run for office is April first, and the papers must be returned by April fifteenth. Just a reminder that Town Meeting will take place on Tuesday, May sixth, at seven PM. Tonight, we'll take another pass at the warrant, it's basically finalized. I'll ask this board to approve it at their meeting on April seventh, and of course, one week before Town Meeting, at six o'clock in this room, we'll host pre-Town Meeting. Budget office hours, just gonna keep reminding folks that we'll have three this year, April seventh at one PM at the Center for Active Living, April sixteenth at five PM virtual, and April twenty-third at six-thirty at Town Hall. Residents that aren't able to make any of those can, of course, reach out to me, I've had two residents so far take advantage of that. Happy to walk through the budget with anybody. The Tingsborough Public Library Sustainability Committee and Tingsborough Duncible Rotary Club will host Repair Cafe on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, from eleven to two at the Beehive, which is at Two Bridgeview Circle in Tingsborough. This is a great opportunity for residents to bring broken items in and get them repaired with the help of volunteers. I think some of those volunteers are sitting up here. The Zero Waste Day will take place on Saturday, May third, from nine AM to twelve PM at Tingsborough Elementary School. To find a list of all the items that will be accepted, you can visit tingsboroughma.gov. That's all that I've got tonight, Mr. Chair.
As always, very comprehensive, thank you. I do hope that we'll have a, uh, an Assistant Town Manager soon, so that we can break up your, you say, uh, that's a lot.
I know.
You've been doing your cardio. Um, I'll open it up to the board for questions, comments. Mr. Moran, did you wanna start?
Nice work. Thank you.
Um, I have a question on the Winslow School Project. So, the, if I understand what the Historical Commission is asking for, they're just asking to take the remaining 1.2 and, and restore the entire exterior of the building, but we're no longer talking about moving the building?
Correct.
And then, uh, has there been any talk about then what to do with the building, once the exterior's been restored?
Uh, great question. They presented the same thing they presented to you pro- I mean, that must have been, what, three months ago now? They're still hoping to restore the outside and then seek subsequent funding to renovate in three stages. The first stage, and I'm just reciting their presentation, the first stage is renovating the southernmost part of the building, which I think is two classrooms up top and some basement space. Then they would do the middle of the building, and then when funding was available, do the other end. Um, they've thrown around putting the media department over there, they've talked about renting out space, they've talked about community space. Um, I don't have more information than what they've previously presented, but this request specifically was just to get the entire building restored on the outside.
Thank you. No other questions, Mr. Chair.
Select Person Gilfus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, several items, if I may. Um, the item about virtual meetings, virtual hybrid meetings. Did we, am I remembering correctly that someone reached out to us, asking us to send an endorsement of this to the Governor?
Um, yes, so the ability to meet hu- remote or via hybrid is also a piece of the Municipal Empowerment Act, which is certainly a bill that you would have received, uh, emails asking you to support. That was a much broader bill, that focused, it included this, but it also focused on putting more power in municipalities to levy or increase their own taxes. Um, they, it talked about expanding the excise tax as a local option. That has died twice now in the legislature. I expect it'll be refiled this session. What did pass was strictly related to remote meetings, and again, they only authorized it through June of 2027.
So is there action that we could take to encourage that along at all?
The extension of remote meetings only? No, I, it is largely expected the Governor will sign it.
Great. Um, just wanna make sure we're doing our part, if we can. Um, oh goodness, I didn't jot down my notes. Um, I am disappointed to see that the Bingo Night at the Center for Active Living is for people over the age of sixty. I looked at the website after you just said that, and I am not invited, so I will not be in attendance. But maybe, um, other people at this table could go.
Don't look at me!
We've been talking about the, uh, active lives of the Select Board members. Um, and,
That slide.
And the, um, the Winslow update, I know that there's something in the annual report about what they would like to see happen, like what, basically what they are putting forth as their proposal, the Historical Commission. Um, so, I presume that this 1.2 million is advancing their goal that they have reported.
Um, it, I think yes, uh, yes, but it doesn't go toward anything on the inside. I think that the way it was presented to CPC was, this was the first step to actually seal up the building and kind of secure future investment in the building. Um, how soon after that work is done, would they go back to CPC for any additional funding? I can't say. But I'm sure it's all part of that bigger plan.
And in the interim, they want you to figure out the cost estimate?
Yeah, CPC basically said, listen, we keep doing these project requests based on, well, I've got a friend that said it would be this. Obviously, the 1.5 million was not nearly enough to do what Town Meeting wanted, so CPC's perspective was, forget the merits for a minute, we don't have firm costs, we don't know, you know, I think the Historical Commission assumes that it's as simple as re-siding the building, putting the windows back in. What hasn't happened, and we did to some degree with the original proposal, because we were focusing just on the schoolhouse, but, you know, we did, we've done some roofwork in the past, but is the roof really up to par? I think CPC wants to know that any funding request and matching estimate really would get them what they're saying, and so that in six months, we're not back at the same point where now Town Meeting has tied up 1.28 million dollars again for something that isn't truly feasible.
Is there a cost associated with getting that quote?
Yeah, CPC, yes, there is, uh, and CPC has expressed the willingness to use their administrative expenses. Every year, we can allocate a certain percent, we've done fifty thousand normally. It wouldn't be fifty thousand, I think you'd be talking probably in the fifteen, maybe twenty thousand dollar range, but yes, that would be an expense that they'd have to approve. Their administrative expenses don't go to Town Meeting, that, that they can authorize, so let's say in three weeks, I have prices, I can go to CPC meeting, they can independently vote to authorize me to spend, say, up to fifteen thousand of administrative expenses. The timeline means that even if then we complete the work, and they're favorable to it, it is unlikely, it is certainly unlikely that it would be available for the May Town Meeting.
Especially because we need to approve the warrant sooner.
Absolutely, April seventh, yep.
Okay, I think that's everything, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Cohen?
I'm good, I'm looking forward to talking about the warrant.
I'm with you. Um, yeah, thank you, Colin. Um, lots of, lots of stuff happening. Um, why don't we bump down? So we're gonna go right into the DPW piece, you're gonna just do the cemetery piece, I believe?
Yes. All right. So as this board will remember, when we adopted the Department of Public Works Act, and as I've mentioned earlier, it took the Cemetery Commission, it disbanded it, and it put it within the Department of Public Works. So previously, any rules and regulations were adopted by the Cemetery Commission, which was an elected body. The DPW Act specifically delegates the authority to promulgate regulations and set fees to this board. What you're seeing in front of you is not necessarily a lot of new regulations, but rather our attempt to take kind of, uh, memorialized in certain people's heads regulations, the way that the commit, that the cemetery's operated, put them in writing, and then where we could, clean it up so that it matched, um, how our peers are doing it. A couple of things here, we never had a policy about burials on Sundays. Um, we never did them, but depending on who the commissioner was at the time, there would be some exceptions made, and as this body can assume, when you start to make exceptions, it makes it incredibly difficult to say no to somebody else, so we formalize that here. Another thing that we did in anticipation of the fact that we're working toward a point where internal staff are doing this, as opposed to us hiring it out, is we tried as much as possible to match the working hours of the current DPW employees. So for instance, we will not do internments on Sunday or any official town holidays. That was always an unwritten rule, but again, you had these one-offs where somebody would make an exception. The reason that we felt it important to clarify it in the policy, and then also list out the, the holidays, is these holidays come directly from the DPW union contracts, so, you know, if, in order for us to continue to provide burial services at a low cost, we can't do them on a day where we'd be required to pay time or time and a half. It gets higher and higher, particularly in the, the wintertime. So all of these rules just kind of formula- formalize that. Um, cemetery dawn to dusk, these general rules, these all, again, existed in different places. Some of them were on the application for a plot, some of them were on the paperwork you got when you bought a deed. None of this is new at all. Ownership and burials, one of the things that we're currently working on is streamlining how we determine ownership. I'm not, um, happy to report that over the years, certainly we have discovered that somebody bought a plot thirty-five years ago and went to exorcise that plot, and there was actually somebody improperly buried there, or somebody else had the plot. So we've streamlined a lot of it, we've got, we're working with our Clerk's Office and our DPW administrative support to clarify this, but in order to do it, we really needed to clarify how you take ownership, who gets ownership. I mean, right now, it doesn't matter if your name is on it, if you're in physical possession of a deed, maybe it's a, a friend gave it to you, we were just taking that deed and saying, okay, that sounds good. We're clarifying that it has to be signed over to you, and it's, you know, it seems simple that I'm saying this out loud, but again, you're taking a, a cemetery that ran largely based on volunteers, the same volunteers for ten, fifteen, twenty years, and now with the help of Doug Latulip, who was the last elected Cemetery Commissioner and has been a tremendous help putting these together, we're just starting to finally, um, organize around these rules. Cremation, if there's a full burial and cremation is to be added, only spouse's remains are to be allowed, this...
I think it's just the way that sentence is written is confusing.
Yes, um, this one is confusing, this is from experience. I mean, we're at a public meeting, so it's kind of hard to talk about individual experiences, but we have at least twice since we took over the cemetery under the Department of Public Works, had a situation where there was a deed, an, an ex-spouse has the deed to go in with the former spouse. There's never, there's no, um, reorganization, and now you've got somebody looking to execute the deed, which again, they have, and you're like, and you've got somebody else who's like, well, wait a minute, we've now been married for eleven years, what happens to me? Is this the perfect solution? Probably not, but it was the clearest solution for now. We, we've looked at how other cemeteries do it, and they use more complicated language, but again, twice since we took over the, the cemetery, we've had a situation where you have people fighting over who's gonna be buried with, with the spouse.
I think the question is-
I don't mean to make light of it, because-
No, no. But I think the question is, how does it address that particular issue that you just described?
Is this phrased in a way that protects that situation?
It does, because you would now, so-
I think the sentence.
If there's a full burial and cremation to be added, yeah, the, the language is not great.
I think that's, if you could just fix how that is phrased.
Yeah.
It's, it would have to be an active spouse.
I thought we did fix this language, actually.
There's something missing here.
Current spouse.
Yeah, current spouse, or so, it, it, yeah.
Favorite spouse.
Favorite spouse.
You understand the intent, though?
Yes, we understand the intent.
All right, I'll work on some language.
Yes.
I think Select Person Gilfus was trying to explain that, I don't believe that the, the words-
No, it doesn't, you're right.
If you were to, if we were to vote on this today as it stands, I feel like we would be in danger if this came up. So let's, I think we can either fix the language while we're still talking, and then vote on it, or vote with the asterix that you're going to make.
Let me just look at something real quick, because I pointed out something on this, and I wanna make sure that I have the latest version. Because I, I think I pointed out that it didn't matter if it was a full burial, or if it was a cremation and a cremation, if we were adding somebody to the same plot.
But even still, like, what does that mean? So it's, if there was a plot, if there was a two-person plot, and there are already two caskets, we would authorize adding an urn in addition to that?
If there was a full, no, if there was only, so in, in a burial chamber, if there was a full burial, you have the ability to add one urn of a cremated remain.
Yeah.
We're saying that, I think they're trying to say that only the spouse of whoever the first buried was can be buried as a cremate. You can't put two full burials in, in a chamber, you can only do the, the one full burial, and-
If it's a, okay, so if it's a single plot that can only accept a casket and one urn.
Correct.
Not-
Two caskets.
Stacking two caskets in a one person, that would be a crazy thing, why would anyone think that that is available to them? Okay, could you do one casket, two cremated urns?
I wanna thank our Cemetery Commissioner Doug Latulip, who is providing me live- I want to thank our cemetery commissioner Doug Latulip, who is providing me live updates.
Thanks Doug.
It is after hours, according to.
Is to prevent, on top of what I've said, to prevent a child's cremated remains or a grandchild in the plot. Um, so we'll work on some language.
Yeah.
You've made the scenario much worse now.
Yes, I did, okay, moving right along.
Move along and then we can vote on this.
Alright, that is, I think that was the only line in this that I questioned, everything else was very logical.
The, the framing of the sentence, the intent is clear, but you're right, we've got to work on the way we read it. Uh, there's nothing new or changed in monuments and markers, and you'd be hard pressed to find, um, different rules anywhere else. Work on lots, this just clarifies that only the cemetery division of the DPW can perform the work. When we were dealing with a situation where somebody wanted to be buried outside of the burial, they were like, well, we'll just hire somebody to do it. And so this is clarifying that the town has liability, we can't just have anybody working on there. Stone size, I know Doug spent a lot of time looking at this. The size may seem like a minor thing to regulate, but remember, we have limited space, and so making sure that everything appears uniform is important. And this fee schedule is what we were currently charging, just memorializing it again, it was not previously memorialized.
You have something in the way of the presentation on the screen that's being.
Oh, you know what it is, because I paused it to look at my email, thank you, Mr. Moran.
So it sounds like, um, wi- with the exception of the multiple people in one.
I think I can fix that right now.
What'd you say? Sub- subject to you fixing that one, and even then, it's better than what we have right now.
Yep.
The, the net on it is, you're looking for us to approve these updated rules and regulations.
In the event of a cremation being added to a burial with a full burial, only the cremated remains of a spouse may be added. I think burial, but, but added to a burial plot.
And, and you need to say the current spouse, if you mean the current spouse, because an ex spouse can't go in.
Well, doesn't ex eliminate the spouse? Right, if I'm divorced, I'm not really a spouse anymore?
You're a former spouse.
They're fighting for a spot in the grave.
Touche, touche, okay.
That would be kind of vindictive.
Hey, I mean, people. Turns out the crazies.
But the net on it is, the rules and regs are, it's better than what we had.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, does anybody have any other questions relative to this?
Thank you so much.
Do we have enough to entertain a motion? I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, move that we approve the Town of Tingsborough Cemetery Rules and Regulations. Adopted twenty twenty-five by the Tingsborough Select Board.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that carries five zero zero. Um, that was it for that one, right?
Yes.
I can move to seven C, review proposal for labor, labor council services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, at this board's request, I solicited a proposal from Mead, Talman, and Costa to take over representation of the town in the area of labor law. As this board is aware, under the Town Manager Act, the board retained the authority to hire, appoint, and direct legal counsel. The town is currently represented on labor matters by KP Law, which has represented the town for more than twenty years. The town does not have a current contract with KP Law, and we pay for those services on an hourly basis as needed. Mead Talman and Costa currently represents Tingsborough's Town Council, and in that ro- role, provides legal advice and representation in all legal matters. With the exception of labor, they're compensated for that with a yearly retainer, which covers all of our legal representation. With the exception of litigation, which they bill as an hourly rate. Tingsborough entered into a contract with Mead Talman and Costa for those services in twenty eighteen, following the retirement of longtime Town Council Charles Rulis. Mrs. Rulis didn't represent the town on labor matters, so when we were soliciting proposals on town council services. We didn't also solicit services for labor council. However, given that it's been over twenty years since this item was last visited, and the fact that the town has enjoyed a very favorable relationship with Mead Talman and Costa. It would make sense for the board to consider consolidating all of our legal services with one firm. Additionally, it is sound business practice to routinely review these types of relationships to ensure the town is getting the best price and services. The attached proposal outlines the firm's qualifications, their experience in other municipal clients, as well as their hourly rate. I'm recommending that we stick to billing on an hourly basis, as we typically don't use labor services enough to justify an annual retainer. For instance, uh, some municipalities bring labor council into every collective bargaining negotiation, I have found that to be tremendously counterproductive, and so we don't. Um, on an average month, we probably get advice from labor council. I'd say less than five hours a month, so it's not, and some months we go a month, you know, a whole month, maybe two months without getting it. It's nice to have them when something does come up, um, but we maintain, we have a very positive working relationship with our employees, so we very seldom have to use them. So it wouldn't make sense for us to agree to a retainer, because we would likely end up paying them more than we need them. To that end, they're proposing a fiscal year twenty-six hourly rate of two hundred dollars an hour, which is lower than KP Law's currently hourly rate. Which is two hundred and eighty-five dollars, which will increase to two ninety-five on July first. I've spoken to several managers who use Mead Talman and Costa for labor council, they're very pleased with their services. From a general town council perspective, I've been extremely pleased with their representation, as have our department heads, and I think members of this board as well. Finally, this type of contract is exempt from chapter thirty B, so the board need not engage in a formal procurement process before awarding a contract. If the board is so inclined, it could vote tonight to appoint Mead Talman and Costa as labor council for the Town of Tingsborough. And authorize the town manager to enter into a contract for those services. The contract would reflect the fiscal year twenty-six hourly rate, and future rates would be agreed to, uh, every year, as they do currently for their litigation.
Thank you for that explanation, I'll open it up to the board for questions, comments, Mr. Moran.
I don't have any questions or comments, thank you.
No questions, Mr. Chair. Select person Gilfis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is really pedantic, but, um, I just noticed that in their presentation, Talerman is one L. So if we could just correct that.
Thank you.
No questions.
So.
Thank you.
You know, with, with, with Town Managers Act, um, as, as people in this board know, but maybe the residents don't. It's the town manager that is responsible for the hiring and firing. And, you know, we've, we've, we've worked with this company for a long time, we feel very comfortable with them. Um, and I looked at Colin to make sure, he was very comfortable, which he is. Uh, he is the one that's meets with them and talks to them, uh, you know, the most, uh, needs to feel comfortable with them. And if he's comfortable with them, then I, I approve of this.
Yeah, yeah, I think, um, so, we've been using Mead Talman and Costa for, um, general counsel for a while. I find them to be, um, very professional, very helpful. Um, specifically for labor, Kate Federoff, um, would be handling that as opposed to Adam Costa. We've worked with Kate, and, um, she's, she's filled in for some general council things in, um, town meetings. And, um, I find her to be extremely knowledgeable, um, very pragmatic. Uh, she, you know, understands both sides of the equation, and I think would be fantastic, uh, for us. I think it's good to review these things periodically, I was, I was surprised it had been twenty years, so it was like. Um, now is a good time to do that, so I think that this is, uh, the right thing to do and the right time to do it. So, if nobody has anything else to add, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to the Select Board appoint Mead Talerman and Costa as Labor Counsel for the Town of Tingsborough. And authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement for those services.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that carries five zero zero. Old business. Review the fiscal twenty-six budget.
Excellent, alright.
And I've seen this a bunch of times, so I'm not sure if I ask questions and, uh, things like that, I. I, I've just seen it so many times.
Yes.
Capital and finance and all the others, so take it away.
You got it, alright, I'm gonna skip the first slide, because you've seen it a million times. But I'm presenting to you what is likely the final budget that you'll see before I ask you to oppose the warrant on April seventh. I want to talk a little bit about the landscape going into the budget presentation, although of course, many of you are aware of it. Going into the planning for fiscal year twenty-six, all but one labor contract on the general government side were settled. Um, so our labor costs were pretty well known, that's a reversal from last year, where we were still negotiating all of those contracts, basically going into the budget. The one contract that we're still negotiating, uh, expires June thirtieth, and we're still working on it, but the current budget includes our latest proposal to the union. The school department was in the final year of its set two point seven percent budget increase, which tremendously helped us plan. We saw higher than normal health insurance increases, seventeen percent over fiscal year twenty-five. For reference, we saw just about five percent over fiscal twenty-four and fiscal twenty-five. And this is the first year that the general fund contributed nine hundred thousand dollars to the middle school debt. In total, we're contributing a million, as I'll show in a future slide, but a hundred thousand of that, as I've said a dozen times, is coming from the Lakeview lease. On the revenue side, we have categories that are trending very well, higher than budgeted. A hallmark of Tingsborough's budgeting is that we've been tremendously conservative on the revenue side, and so we generally do a lot better than we expected. Earnings on investment, we've talked about it nauseam, those are doing very well. New growth fell short of our expectations, you'll remember that as a part of the commitment for the million dollars, we had looked at a whole host of big projects that we thought would be coming online. Most notably, of course, Toll Brothers, that hasn't moved as fast as we would like it to be, and so for instance, we're not expecting that it'll be complete. By June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, which is the deadline for us to capture new growth in the fiscal year twenty-six budget. We're also still waiting for progress on two large permitted warehouse projects, one is four oh five Middlesex Road, which is. That sliver of land between Epigram and those business condos. And then Toll Brothers, I'm sorry, and then the warehouse on Kendall Road. Which, um, had, I think, a very positive meeting with the planning board at their last meeting, they're seeking to change the phasing of their development. So they'll build their smaller building first, and then build a larger building when they have a tenant. Obviously, it's better for us for them to build the larger building first, but they're willing to build the smaller building before our tenant comes online. Which just means that we'll realize some new growth faster. One of the things to keep in mind on the new growth front is as these projects come to fruition and finalize. We're really running out of those large new growth projects, so we'll continue to see your typical new growth. People add additions to their homes, people tear down smaller homes and build bigger ones, some commercial new growth personal property. But it's seeing new growth in the area of seven hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred thousand. Is not going to be as common, unless there are some larger developments coming online. We've talked a lot about how we ca- uh, calculate the revenue forecast, this is a fancy way of saying that basically. Every three weeks, I beg the finance department to give me good numbers on our revenue for this current year, and I beg the assessors to agree that our new growth will be higher. And then when inevitably they have to let me down, we, we make our assumptions more reasonable. So I want to demonstrate, this is our most recent revenue forecast. Um, you can see that the three areas I want to point your attention to are motor vehicle excise, which is trending, um, extremely well. As is licenses and permits, we've talked about this at length, so I won't spend too much time on it. But this is the result of two things, one, the adjustment to the fees that this board did two years ago now. And then also the fact that Toll Brothers is cranking out building permits, so. On the plus, we are getting a lot of revenue from the Toll Brothers project, because they're now cranking through these permits. But we don't get to claim the new growth until they get an occupancy permit, so many of the things they're working on today. They won't get an occupancy permit on until July, August, September, which is why we can't calculate that in the new growth. And then earnings on investment, you can see is trending much better than we had previously anticipated. Some of these things in here, like the top line real estate and personal property, this variance has to do just with the timing, we can only collect the prop two and a half plus new growth, so. This looks like we're gonna collect more than we budgeted, it's just when the payments come in, our projection formula makes it a little wonky.
Could you say that again?
So, real estate and personal property, we collect that quarterly, but not everybody pays it at the same rate, so. Right now, the formula that we use says sixty-three percent of the revenue is collected at this stage in the year, and it uses a calculator. Calculated formula to, to project out, but we can't collect more than what we budgeted, which now. We could get more in terms of new growth, which we would see in the next fiscal year when they certify it, but like, we can't collect four point nine million more in real estate. This is just a, a, a trending issue, so.
Got it, okay, thank you.
And that's true for some of these things, like the cherry sheet, we've cleared that out, we're only gonna get as much as the state said, there's no surprises from the state in our favor.
They don't give you extra.
They don't, so what you're seeing now is, and including your packet is a PDF version, so you don't have to spend too much time on this. You can see here, this is our revenue forecast for fiscal year twenty-six. Um, we've adjusted motor vehicle excise in line with the current projections. We don't just take one positive projection and say, okay, we can jump these up, we look at two, three trending, uh, in the right direction. We also can't capture all of the projections, so, for instance, licenses and permits was trending much above one point two million. But we have to justify this to the Department of Revenue when we send them our budget, and you can't just justify it by saying, well, we had one really good quarter. You've got to be able to explain it within our means, and so that's why, even though we likely could capture more than one point two million. It's, we would have to justify it to the Department of Revenue. And this is the second page, you can see on the cherry sheet, the revenue, we're using the governor's budget. As we've talked about at length in some of these meetings. The legislature itself won't adopt a budget until long after town meeting is done, so we always go with the governor's budget, it never. It, it never lets us down, sometimes we get a little bit more when the legislature gets involved, but the governor's budget generally represents for us a worst case scenario. So all in all, we're looking at, a- and I also want to point out the excluded debt, one point nine. That is how much we'll be billing to residents on top of their regular tax bill, I have a slide that explains this later. That doesn't represent the full middle school bill, because we have a million dollars covering it from other sources. So in total, we're looking at fifty-two point two six million dollars in projected revenue. Moving along to where we're spending that money. The fiscal year twenty-five budget was for, just over forty-nine million dollars, and I'm proposing a budget for fiscal year twenty-six, that's fifty-two point two million. That represents a three point two million dollar increase, or six point five percent. That seems dramatic, but remember, this is the first year of the middle school debt, so if you eliminate the exempt debt. The actual budget for town operations is increasing three point six percent, which is in line with what we saw last year, I think last year's was three point four percent. And that's both the general fund and the schools portion of the budget. What are the main budget drivers? Again, nine hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to reduce the middle school exempt debt. The contractual labor increases, again, we are in now year two of set contracts for most of our collective bargaining agreements. A seventeen percent health insurance increase, and really, the only new item that you'll see in the budget this year is twenty-five thousand dollars to support. Combining funding that already existed in the fire department with twenty-five grand to make a full-time public safety administrative assistant. This is the slide that I present every single time we talk about the budget that shows our exempt debt, just so residents understand what that million dollars is. Mr. Eldridge talked about this during capital, but the exempt debt is the debt service payments that we're able to levy on residents outside of your prop two and a half. So this, as town meeting voted, we were authorized to borrow for the middle school. And charge the payments directly to residents on top of their regular tax bill. The commitment was, we would find a million dollars every year to reduce the amount we were sending to you on top of your tax bill. In fiscal year twenty-five, we had the school roof in boiler, as well as the middle school. But that all dropped off with the exception of the middle school in fiscal year twenty-six, so. The fiscal year twenty-six exempt debt service is two point nine million. You take out the million dollars that we're contributing, again, nine hundred thousand from the general fund, which you see in this budget. And a hundred thousand dollars from the Lakeview lease revenue, the actual exempt debt that we will pass on to residents on top of the levy limit tax bill. Is one point nine seven, and for reference, it was one point eight three million in fiscal year twenty-five. What is new in this budget and what do we prioritize? Again, we talked about the public safety administrative assistant, it's a split position, fifteen hours weekly doing records in the police department. And twenty-five hours in the fire department, which was already budgeted in both fiscal twenty-four and fiscal twenty-five. We made some structural changes, which if you look at the line item budgets, which we're preparing to post. You'll see some areas, for instance, the facilities division has a dramatic increase, because we moved the salaries that should be in there from the highway department. So, on the highway side, you'll see an equal decrease in salaries as what you're seeing in the facilities. This will help us, again, like we started last year, really report where your tax dollars are being spent. It wasn't a transparent reporting mechanism to say that the three facilities staff being in the highway budget is how we're spending our money, because they're not doing highway tasks. So since the board last saw a budget, the big changes are the seventeen percent health insurance increase and the sixteen percent greater old tech assessment increase. That's much higher than what we saw in fiscal year. That's much higher than what we saw in fiscal year twenty-four, and it's for a few reasons. One, in both fiscal twenty-five and fiscal twenty-four, we saw lower than normal increases, which makes kind of a correction increase in one year seem all that more challenging. But it also relates to new debt service coming online, debt service for the school district is unrelated to our enrollment. As they borrow more, they increase the assessment based on the debt. And transportation costs, we're seeing it on the local level, are skyrocketing. There's a lot of factors that go into that, largely it's because bus companies have monopolies, they all, it's a very big investment to bid on a bus bid. For instance, when you bid on Tingsborough's bid, you've got to have the buses ready in order to file a bid, because otherwise we'd be wasting our time. So companies don't screw with each other, because if they were going to, they would have to buy fifteen new buses. But because of the way that system works, they're able to increase the costs exponentially year over year, because there's not that competition.
Could I ask a question about the debt service?
Yes.
So, if I understood you correctly, if Greater Lowell Tech decides to take on debt, they pass that cost to us in the assessment, do we have a seat at the table about the debt that they incur?
Tingsborough has a representative on the Greater Lowell Tech School Committee, but this board does not have a say.
Yeah, I do mean the town, yeah, yeah.
Residents don't either.
Correct.
It's kind of an interesting model, because when, like, when we take on debt as a town, the residents, it goes through the residents and they really decide if they're going to bear the burden of that and the feasibility and their appetite to take that on. But with this, this was an unexpected cost that we had no real influence over.
Yeah, I will say that we are fortunate that we're not part of an actual regional school district, right? We're part of this regional technical school. But what you've described is a real problem in some like Central Mass communities, even some North Shore communities that have regional school districts, where there is that minimized control. The one thing that I will say about Greater Lowell is the local control, if you will, is in your enrollment. So we have a very strong school system in Tingsborough, so we don't have as many students leaving Tingsborough to go to Greater Lowell Tech. It is, all of the assessments are proportionate to your participation, whereas if you're in a regional school district, you're just all kind of sharing the cost, so you're right, there's no town meeting vote as to whether or not to approve the debt. But it isn't as undemocratic as like a true regional school model, if that makes sense.
It does, thank you.
And I would challenge that though, because each regional school model, each of those towns gets to vote on that budget. And like in North Middlesex, they just ran into this. They went through an override for all three of them and if, unless they all, if two of them say no, it doesn't happen. So, we don't have any say, we don't have any say in their operational budget either. And through state laws, they get increasing costs. So, it doesn't work in our favor, it doesn't work for towns, it is undemocratic. Now, we have, we have a representative on that school committee, but this has been a problem for a while and actually, I wonder when the schools are coming back in to present us with their, with their next list, but we run into this. This is where, when you look at, and you know as a school committee, former school committee member, the big challenge is, between the charter schools and the.
Yeah, four schools in town.
The vocational schools. Whatever is left over is what goes to the Tingsborough Public Schools. And that's a, that's not a good thing.
That's a reverse model, yeah.
It's, you look at it and say, and that is why, when we had the tri-board meeting with Representative Gary and Senator Kennedy, we've been saying for years, the model is broken. And I haven't seen anything being done on it yet, but the model is broken and our, the kids that go to the public schools do have that challenge. If you look, the Greater Lowell Vocational Technical High School is a fantastic facility, I mean, it's great, top notch. They've got a lot of money.
Yeah.
I can tell you, they didn't have to go through the hoops that we had to go through to get our middle school. They put on a, you know, cafeteria, all this other stuff, improvements a lot easier for them. So, it is broken, I think we need to continue to advocate for that to be fixed at the state level. You know, I looked at it and said, holy smokes, that's a big chunk now. It is in our best interest to have our kids stay, you know, and make our schools great, so that they don't go to some of these others. But, I'll tell you, the vocational technical high schools are a fantastic option for people, because, you know, the trades are underrepresented and it's a great opportunity for people. So it's really difficult, right? You don't want to sit there and say, hey, I don't want to support vocational, my grandfather was a teacher and a vocational technical, I said tremendous value, but yet it's not, it's not an even playing field.
It's when you get the politicians, Mr. Chair, involved and the formula is just not great for the public schools. But, they do good work, so, you know, it's just recognizing that and then continuing to, not literally, but in your mindset, beat up on our local politicians to give us more stuff. I'm not saying.
That was your professional former school committee, yeah. Thank you, that's very helpful, this conversation, and I think, I'm glad that I asked this in line with what I said last meeting, which is I'm going to try to ask more questions that I think other people might be curious about. Because this is one of those items where I absolutely support funding schools, I absolutely support technical vocational education. I think the piece about it being rather undemocratic is kind of what raised flags for me, because I think, living in a community with an open meeting government, I've really grown to value how important it is for people to show up and be a part of their process and decision-making and especially when it comes to your own individual finances, being able to speak with your own interests in mind in a public way. And so this is one of those things where like, sixteen percent increase that we hadn't really planned for and there's really no recourse for that, it's just kind of, this is the bill.
Do you want to, do you want to add to it and say, the other part of the equation of the sixteen percent increase? That it isn't even the full amount?
Oh, no.
And that they're going to hit for more next year?
Yeah.
So, the amount that they wanted was unrealistic and was going to cause an uproar. And so they said, we're only going to charge you this amount.
Oh, great.
And so.
Very generous.
Yeah, it's one of those, this is not, like, our health insurance might be more of a one-time thing. The, the technical high school assessment is not, from what I understand, and I wasn't part of the conversation, but Colin had indicated that there was, there's more.
Softening.
Yeah, it's a softening of the blow, so, you know, that's something that we will have to plan for next year.
Yeah, and I expected our tri-board meeting, which is April seventh, if I'm remembering correctly, the conversation about the school funding formula, you know, you brought a very good point. The other challenge is on the charter school side, it costs us more to send a student to the charter school in our town than it costs Lowell, because their per-student spending is less, same education, Tingsborough's paying more. So there's a whole host of, and the Student Opportunity Act, I'm going to, we'll talk about this when the senator is here, it did a lot to change the formula to benefit cities. It had the opposite effect in communities like Tingsborough. The one thing on the health insurance I wanted to note is, people have asked like, well, what can we do about that increase? Remember, our employees are just as motivated as we are to get lower health insurance costs, because they have a portion of it. When you look at some of the, first, I would note that we left a small purchasing collaborative that was like a regional group five years ago now, and the rates that we're paying now is where we were when we were in that collaborative five years ago. So while seventeen percent is a crappy number, if we had stayed with that collaborative, which has since folded up and is non-existent, we would, we'd be much, much higher. We also looked at the GIC, the Group Insurance Commission, which is state-run, but municipalities can opt in. Their average increase this year was twelve percent, with some seeing increases up to fifteen. The challenge is, you have no plan design control, so you take what the state gives you and that's the end of it. Their rates are higher, so we're talking about a seventeen percent increase, but on rates that were already lower. And so the only other option aside from a regional group, which we left one and it collapsed and there's I think, one remaining one in like the Wachusett region, and I think that's not doing too well. Or the GIC, the only other.